Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
I guess you're supposed to raise your right hands. And repeat after me, "Aye."
Aye, Susan Johnson.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Now official. And... Any public comment on closed session items? Hearing none, we will be adjourning to closed session to discuss items D2, D3, D4, and D5. Clerk of the Board, now reporting out the closed session. Item C2 is on the consent agenda. Item C3, C4, and C5, there's no action to report to.
This is a little bit more comfortable anyway. So on behalf of Lafayette School, I'm excited to be here tonight. It is the holiday season. We've had a lot of festivities at our school over the last week or so. Last Thursday, our wonderful PTA had a craft fair and a bake sale. And Mr. Chapin had his students carol through the Coast Guard housing and also entertained us at our holiday craft fair. Yesterday, we had a wonderful sing-along by our fantastic music teachers, David De Matt and Michael Bull. And then tomorrow, we have our second one. Tonight, we're here, so we wanted to share with you some of our holiday spirit. We also have some special people that work in our district. As you know, incredible teachers. And one of them is standing here with me. She has some different talents, and one of them is that she's a teacher of American Sign Language. And so tonight, our students, who I'm going to call up one at a time, and then they're going to meet us in the flag salute using American Sign Language. And they're also then going to entertain you with a holiday song. So when I call your name, first, I'm going to call Ms. Jernigan. Autumn Jernigan, teaching first grade. She's going to go over there. And then we're going to be followed by Patrick Focalt. Kaylee Frank, your teacher. Lucy Haley. Nora Lall. Lenisha Landry. Riley Powell. Allison Spaling. Declan Widman.
Calvin.
Calvin. Come on, join your teacher as well. That's Calvin Bryce. And so they're going to... Oh, first of all, these are our students. And I'd like their parents to stand up for a second, for a moment, please. Parents of these students, please stand. Thank you so much for coming. Principal is what you're going to see here tonight. So the flag is above us, and somebody needs the microphone. This is Lucy. Please stand. What are they going to see for us, Ms. Jernigan?
We're going to be singing "We Wish You a Merry Christmas."
Merry Christmas.
And we have some treats for everybody, too, right? From everybody at Lafayette School, we wish you a happy holiday.
Thank you very much. I don't think any speakers have ever brought us treats before.
You can excuse them if they have homework to do.
I know, but that's like Judaism.
Oh, well.
Okay. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Is your mic up? Pull one.
Might I suggest that we move O-33 up before M-31, following the consent calendar, to accommodate our large crowd?
Can we make that adjustment?
Are there any objections?
No. Okay.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that.
So there are no other adjustments to the agenda?
Got it. Okay, this is time for L-5. Annual Organizational Meeting Business: Nomination and Election of Board President for 2011 through 2013. Do I hear any nominations?
I think I would like to nominate John Fullerton as Board President for this year.
I'll second that nomination.
Any other nominations? So I guess we call for the question. Any other comments then? In that case, all those in favor signify by voting "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "No." Then John Fullerton has been elected Board President. Item L-7, Nomination/ Election of Board Clerk for One-Year Term, 2011 through 2012. Do I hear any nominations?
I believe Wendy has served quite a bit longer than I have, and I don't know who's interested in taking on this extra chore. I know that some of us are busier than others, but Wendy has expressed an interest in the position to me, so I would like to nominate Wendy Davis.
Second.
Okay, there's a nomination and a second. Any other nominations for Board Clerk? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Wendy Davis as the Board Clerk signify by voting "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Wendy Clerk is now the Board Clerk. Wendy Davis is now the Board Clerk.
Thank you.
Item L-8, Board Meeting Dates and Times for January 12, 2012 through December 2012.
I move that we adopt this calendar for the meeting times 2012.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody have a problem with any of the dates?
Other than the ones I won't be here for.
We can always change them. We've been known to change a few, or add a few.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favors say "Aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? And so the board meeting dates have been adopted. Item L-9, Appointment of Board Representatives to Committees and Liaisons.
I have a choice.
So, Leanne, you want to go over what we were thinking about as far as the liaisons?
What we were talking about is maybe changing a little bit how we've done board liaisons. Typically, the board has had board members, you know, discuss which school they would like to be the liaison for. What we would like to propose to the board is looking at having almost every board member be a liaison, which in reality, they are. Any member of the school community can contact any board member. Any staff member can certainly invite board members to be involved in any of their school activities. What we were thinking of is if the board would like to consider having site principals select or invite each one of you at some time during the course of the year, or twice during the course of the year, to actually come to something. And it could be the principal, it could be a teacher, it could be, you know, a classified member saying, "Hey, we've got," you know, like what Jan was talking about with what occurred at Lafayette, or any of our other sites in the last week or two, so that you... so that connection is maybe done a little bit more informally, but more frequently. And hopefully, would give people the opportunity to feel like they have more of a connection with the sites and with the board. So we thought we would present that as a proposal for the board to discuss and to consider taking action on. So it would be open, you know, to conversation on what you guys think about that idea.
I think the hope would be that each site would invite each board member at least once a year to something.
Yeah, that's good.
I like the idea, and my only concern would be there's not a site administrator at the corporation. We all need to be involved with what's going on down there as well.
Right. And I would say there's kind of three site administrators down there, between Charlie Arlene and Dan. So, you know, I can encourage them to invite you guys down, whether it's to try a new recipe, or to look at our new bus, or to see something else that's going on at the corp yard. That would be maybe how that connection could occur.
I'm just kind of concerned, though, other than inviting people to specific events, which is kind of, I mean, my interpretation of what you said is that people will be... the board members will wind up being invited to a specific school event, like, "Hi, I'm calling you, it's time for us to invite you to the spring coral arrangement thing." If you're eliminating the actual board member liaison to the site, then what do administrators do, what do teachers do when they want to talk to a specific, not a specific board member, but a board member about what's going on at their school? When we had it the old way, and I would like to propose possibly in addition to, rather than instead of, because I know any number of times, my school site would call me and say, "You know, we're having trouble with this alarm system isn't working yet. I really want to talk about this, and I would like to address this." And it has nothing to do with being invited over to a site for a specific event. It's just they knew which board member to call.
And I think part of what we wanted to make sure that everybody understood is that every board member could be called about concerns. And I hear what you're saying, and it's sometimes nice to have a specific person. I can say, "I can call this person," but I think part of it is just... So we could consider doing both. But part of it was just really letting the public know, as well as each board member, is that anybody from any site could call any one of you with concerns.
True, but does that kind of leave somebody on the hook as to which, you know, if they had a specific person assigned to their school site, it would make it easy to know who to pick up the phone and call, other than calling district office, which would be, you know, another solution. And it could be for the good things, too, not just, you know, "I have a problem with my spirit system," or whatever. I don't, can't off the top of my head recall specifics of some of these phone calls that I've gotten, but I felt that that connection was kind of important, that they knew which board member was... And they didn't have to decide, "Well, I wonder, is John going to listen to me, or should I call Fran? Maybe I'll call Wendy." Anyway, that's just my impression. I would rather see it be, I would rather, I personally would rather have each of us assigned to a specific site in addition to your proposal, rather than instead of.
I would, too.
I think, let's see if I figure this thing out. My first time talking. I think that I agree. I think it's nice to have, so that they do have one point person for people to go to. But I also think that it's, I think that they should also feel like they can call any one of us if they want to, but it's nice to have a point person. And I also think that it's important for us to reach out and call them, too, and invite and tell them we'd like to come and visit their sites and see them also, so that it works both ways. And I think we should, shouldn't feel like if, like, if I'm, my name is down for Lafayette, that I can't go visit all the other sites, too, and, you know, be involved in everybody's site.
And we do.
Yeah. But I just, just saying that I, but I do agree that I think it's good to have at least, to have a point person, so that they're not trying to look for somebody, you know, and they know who to call.
So it sounds like a consensus that the board is, that will continue to have liaisons, but then also request the site administrators to invite each board member at least once a year to some function. So, we have on the sheet provided the 2010-2011 liaisons. And... Let's start with Fran. Is there one that you would like?
I would like, I'll do the first one. I would like to continue at the district office.
And Hank?
I'll take the corp guard.
And Wendy?
I'll hang onto Lafayette.
And Susan?
And I'll do the Alice Berny then.
And so back to Fran?
I would like, I would like to take Zayn.
We skipped you.
You could actually have a...
I'm going to take whatever's left over.
I would like to have Zayn.
I'd like to have Winsler.
Wendy?
EHS. Are we going to have two?
Are you EHS? I didn't hear Wendy. EHS.
I'll do that also.
I think so.
Wendy and Susan? Thank you.
And I'll take, I'll take Grant.
Just leave it on? Okay.
Wendy and Susan. Winsler is Hank, and I'm taking Grant.
Fran's got the same.
I'll take Washington again.
And I'll do Windship at Center, Zoe Barnum.
Is that Susan?
Great.
Unless you want another one, John, I didn't want to take that.
Nope, that's fine, you can have it. Okay, so...
I didn't get Grant either, is that?
Grant is me.
John.
How about Curriculum Committee? Fran, you've been on that?
Yes, I'd like to stay with Curriculum Committee, please.
I'm interested in that also. Pardon me? I would be interested in that also, curriculum. Can we do, can two people do that? Can I?
Sure.
Yes, we just can't do more than two.
Okay.
Needs the last Wednesday of, no. Yes, the last Wednesday of the month.
Not always.
Well, basically.
Okay. It's not Monday, right? Okay.
And then I'm going to, I would like to take the Eureka City County ECS Committee.
That's good.
That was John that said that.
I would like to join you on that if no one else is interested.
So Wendy and John on the Eureka City County ECS Committee?
Wendy? I should leave mine on, too.
I'll do the Safe Roots to School.
District Superintendent Advisory Committee?
I'd be interested in that.
And I would, I would take the Board Representative, that's the first one, I think, to elect members of the county committee and school district organization.
What does that committee do?
Pardon me?
What does that committee do?
It's a, it's a committee of the county, and they elect these members to work with any, any schools having difficulty, as I understand. And they don't meet very often. In fact, not very often at all. This is the first time they've been on this list, as I understand.
School district organization, isn't that the, isn't that the committee that sets the boundaries for school districts and consolidations, and they deal with...
Yes, if there's a problem.
They deal with the schools.
If there's a problem, yeah. And I would think that maybe this year, because of the consolidation at Ortona.
I don't know, being new at this, is, if you would like to, if I would like to suggest a committee that isn't here, how does that work? If I wanted to make a suggestion to create a new committee, that I would be willing to look into myself and start, how would I do that? Would I do that here? What I was wondering is I would like to try to start some kind of a committee that would have a board member on it, administrator from different sites, some teachers from different sites, so that we can get together once a month and talk to people from all the different sites about what's going on and how things are working in the sites, and get more communication between the teachers and the, and the administrators and a board member. Is that, is there something like that that already exists?
I would think that maybe you could meet, you could meet with a superintendent, and that can be developed.
Okay.
And that way, yeah, we can process that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so we couldn't vote on anything like that tonight.
All right.
Okay, so we have slated names for Items L-9. Do I hear a motion? Or any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Do we need one?
I don't think we need one, do we?
Discuss, receive, approve, and adopt. I move that we adopt all these people to all these liaisons and boards.
I'll second.
All those in favor, voting "Aye."
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Okay, public hearing, J-10. So, Leanne, you want to take that away?
It's 14, page 14.
Okay, so I'm calling this public hearing open to receive public comment on changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the governing board and classified white and blue color units for July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2014. Changes to the contract to Eureka City Schools operating budget include an increase in the health and welfare budget by $34,516. So is there any public comment?
I just have a question. That $34,000, is that for what was negotiated between the teachers union and something different?
Yes, yes.
Any other public comments? And so then I close the public hearing. Is there anything else we need to do on that, or? J-11, Notice of Public Hearing. Will be to hold a public hearing, to receive public comment on changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the governing board and Eureka Teachers Association, CTA/NEA, for July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2012. Changes to the contract to Eureka City Schools operating budget include an increase in the health and welfare budget by $55,510. Do I hear any public comment?
That was for the teachers.
Yes.
Okay, I just need to write that down, because the last I heard, it's going to be like $130,000, so this is a good deal. We've had a sweetheart deal sometime. So that was 55, what was that? 55. Okay, thank you very much.
And hearing no other public comments, I'm closing the public hearing. Item K-12, Student Representatives Reports. SubBullet of Senior Projects.
Well, okay, never mind. Happy holidays to everyone. My name is Lauren Graben, this year's school board representative from the Eureka FFA. This month, we've had our Dutch Lottery on December 1, where we had 150 attendees, where students had raffled off their projects, ranging from coat racks to cookies in a jar. We have our annual Christmas caroling that we had tonight, where we go to various care homes and sing to the elderly. Afterwards, we had pizza and we had a white elephant gift exchange. On December 15, we will be serving up 70 tri-tip roast from our tri-tip roast sale. Starting in the new year, we will have, on the 6th and 7th of January, 12 students will be attending MFE and AOA Leadership Conference in Sacramento. Also in January, we will be having our Minute to Win It meeting on the 25th, where you guys are welcome to be coming to and see what we're doing. It's a lot of fun. You guys could probably participate too. And one last piece of info, our judging teams have now started. We had dairy products yesterday, we had forestry on Monday, and we have tons of teams that are starting up. We have our dairy products team, our dairy cattle team, forestry, meats, farm power, floral, and our speaking teams, which I'll be involved in as well. And our first contest will be February 3rd and 4th in Arbuckle. Any questions?
What was the date of the tri-tip roast sale?
We have them tomorrow. There will be... They'll be picked up tomorrow, but if we have an extra, you can come and check out and see. Or you can talk to Lowfall down the hill. I think she might still be there and you could buy one right now.
Thank you.
Any other student representatives? Okay, Senior Projects.
I just wanted to introduce a new student representative speakership that's going to happen. May happen every meeting, but it would seem kind of out of the blue if I didn't tell you what it was. Students who are involved in senior projects will be coming to board meetings as part of their assignment that they have to do to be able to earn the cord of recognition at graduation. They have to speak at a public meeting. And so they'll be coming here to tell you just briefly what their name is, their grade level, and what their project is. So there will be one or up to five students. And so they're just gonna say something that will take 15 seconds, but if you have any questions, they have good answers.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annika Bofa. I am a senior at Eureka High, and my project is Project Portrait. It is a project where I take free senior pictures for students who can't afford it either. Are there any questions?
Good job.
Hi, my name is Nate Gruis, and I'm a senior at Eureka High.
My name is Julie Polk, and I'm also a senior at Eureka High. And our project is Drive to Stay Alive, which is a teen driver safety project. And for those of you that don't know, our project was awarded $87,000 from the State Farm Advisory Board this year.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Shorley. I'm a junior here at Eureka High School, and I'm also part of Drive to Stay Alive. But my senior project this year was to take another look at the historical calendar, which fundraises for Drive to Stay Alive to go to the National Youth Service Learning Conference in April.
Okay, we have a little more than just our senior project information for you guys too. My name's Chelsea Gratz. I'm Eureka FFA President, Senior Class Vice President, and Laura Classic Student Coordinator.
And my name is Katie Spillamerg, and I'm Eureka FFA's ASV rep and the Student Government FFA rep.
Okay, so our senior project for Ag is, if you guys are familiar with the Ag department, when you first walk into Mr. Smith's classroom, which is the first classroom, there's a flowerbed off to the side, but it's all weeded and the bench is broken. We're gonna restore that.
Very nice. And our Booster Club will be supporting us in donating materials, and then we're gonna go out and ask for donations.
Okay, so as I said before, I'm the Laura Classic Student Coordinator this year. Katie will be passing you our itineraries and our bracket for this year. We encourage you to come to all of our games. Eureka High plays Sonoma Valley tomorrow night at 7:30. I'd like to see you there. And then Katie will also be talking about the student government.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this year's senior program will be at the River Lodge in Fortuna on June 2, and our winter forum will be on January 14 at the Adornee. Thank you.
Any other student representative reports? Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Mine will be nearly as fun, but anyway, I would like to just start off in asking the board to make sure for Saturday's board meeting that you bring your facility binders. It might be helpful as part of the meeting. I should have asked you earlier than that, but I wanted to make sure, just to let people know, we are having a facility meeting this coming Saturday, starting at 8:30. And we'll be going to some of our facilities to look at what are the needs of those particular facilities. We're gonna be going on a school bus. Public is invited. Courageous public is invited to ride the school bus. Anyway, it starts here at 8:30 and will last for the majority of the day. And it is a public board meeting, so just wanted to let you guys know about that. Instead of my typical superintendent's report, because of the governor who came out and indicated what budget reductions he's gonna make in January, I thought I would read for the public our state school's chief, Tom Torkelson's comments on the mid-year cuts that we're gonna be facing. So verbatim, I will say, state superintendent of public instruction, Tom Torkelson, issued the following statement regarding mid-year spending cuts announced today. This is his quote. "It's a sad day for California. Taking hundreds of millions of dollars from our schools, on top of the $18 billion in cuts they have already suffered, will only make life harder for students in California's chronically underfunded schools. Mockballing school bus fleets across the state will mean many rural, disabled, and low-income students literally will have no safe way to get to school. Children will lose childcare, students will lose the opportunity for a college education, and our overcrowded classrooms will continue to be jammed with 35 to 40 students. That is not the kind of education or state we want. This is not the California our children deserve." Some of the particulars on how it'll impact Eureka City Schools will be a part of the fiscal budget report that we'll be presenting tonight. We just got this information yesterday, so it's a little hot off the press, as they say, but I did wanna at least indicate in public our highest educational official in the state of California's response to it. That's all for me.
Leanne, could we... Could you send us a copy of that?
Yes, I'll hand it down to the again person.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, item K14, Board Members Reports. Fran?
On Monday night, I attended the Washington School, the first night of the Washington Schools' winter program. They have two nights, and I attended the kindergarten through third grade, for grandson in the second grade. And it was at Eureka High School Auditorium, and it was just excellent. It was very, very nice. And that auditorium is gorgeous. I have been to Zayn a number of times of late, and I just wanna say that the teachers there, and the principals, and everyone has just been so supportive of me and my granddaughter. And I think that's it.
Hank?
As everyone should know, we're embarking on a superintendent search through Search Associates. And the next two days, they will be in town getting input regarding the type of superintendent qualities that we're looking for. And there's a public forum tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. Is it here in the cafeteria?
No, it's Windship in the multipurpose room.
Multipurpose room at Windship. Thank you, Mickey. I just wanted to reiterate that invitation to make sure everyone knows they are welcome. And we're looking statewide in a search. And the bar is being set by our current superintendent, so we'll see how it all pans out in the future.
Susan?
In preparing for my new role, I've been doing a lot of reading. I've got two boxes full of books that I've been working on. And I, in the last couple weeks, went and visited all of our sites. I spent a couple hours at each site with the principal and walking around and meeting students and meeting teachers. And it was a wonderful experience. And the one thing that really impressed me a lot is we have some absolutely wonderful people working in this district. The teachers, everybody that I've met, the techs, the administrators, everyone is working so hard to try to give our kids the best education that they can in these difficult times when, you know, after the letter she just read, it's not an easy time right now to try to educate kids in California or anywhere in the country. But it was a great experience. And then today, I went also and I visited Redwood Coast Montessori that we have received a petition of, and had a nice lunch with the students there. They made me some soup and some bread, and it was nice. It was a really neat experience. So I've really enjoyed getting out. The only school I have not been to yet is Eureka High. So after the holidays, I'll come and take a tour here and talk to the principal here and some of the teachers here.
Wendy?
I have nothing to report, but I would like to welcome our new board member and wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you.
And I'll second that welcoming to the newest board member.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment on non-agenda items. "This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments." So do we have any public comments? So if you move to the microphone and then state your name? Yes, or whichever one works.
Hello? Yeah, TBI class. I'd really like to see you guys keep it around for people with traumatic brain injuries like me and get the funding and care that the people need, along with studies and care that we get, know that's really needed to class. And I just want everybody to know that, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been able to remember my teacher's name for six months since classes began. I've been able to remember my teacher's name for six months since classes have been out. So it's really important to me that, again, I state again, that we keep this class around and hopefully it helps out other people that are just like me. And foresee any possibilities or problems in the future that they might have. And, you know, just try to understand the people who come from where I came from. And it's kinda hard to speak in front of everybody, but I was just gonna let you guys know that it's really been hard. And I need this class to kinda relate to everybody and let them see our situation. Thank you very much.
Can you tell us your art... your name?
My name is Mike Steenblock. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm also signed up for another three minutes. I beg your indulgence. And thank you so much for listening to our need for his class. It was about three years ago, he was assaulted here in amnesia and has had amnesia ever since, and is currently recovering at the Seaview Nursing Home. And I feel like a parent again of a child who, like, is relearning their basic skills. And so I beg you to consider their needs on par with those of the children. And having this class is how he is able to relate to the difficulty of living and recovering with amnesia and stroke-like symptoms, and treating it as if he is privileged to be at a dorm room instead of consigned as a patient. And so it really gives him a hope to the future to be in school. And he just enrolled in College of the Redwoods in journalism when he suffered the attack. And being back in school, even though in this limited way, it really means the world to him. And both to his sister, my wife, and to me as well. Thank you so much for the couple years he's been able to be in the class. And him and so many people I've seen, I've volunteered in that class, and I've seen the teacher has an incredible gift for bringing the people together, realizing that it takes a special type of support and learning that then he learns to... They learn to manage the TBI as well as learning academics. And I just can't give her credos well enough. In my heart, she's a saint. And thank you so much, and I hope that class can come back.
Thank you.
That was my brother-in-law, Michael Steenblock, and my name is Bede Steenblock-Smith. Thank you.
And I don't have any green sheets, but are there any other public comments?
Hello, my name's Stephanie Jackson, and I am a teacher at Eureka High School. And I have two things I'd like to speak about. One of them has to do with the senior project class, the kids that got up here. I just wanted to report to you all that the senior project, I'm fortunate enough to be involved with that this year. It's my first year of being involved with it. And there's currently 67 students signed up to do a senior project without being asked to sign up to do a senior project. So those 67 kids sought me out to sign up. And that says a lot for the culture of service that students at Eureka High School have. It's ingrained in their being. So I think that it's really a testament to Eureka High School. And one of the things that's happening is that the seniors who are in the senior project class are not actually in a class. There's no class period for them. So we really have the very first full-blown online course at Eureka High School. There are little pieces of Moodle taught classes right now happening at Eureka High School, but this class, these students are 100% online. So everything, all of our communication is done through a Moodle site that's supported by the Humboldt County Office of Education. So that's a really neat aspect of it, too. So that's a really neat aspect of it, too. The other thing is that part, along with them coming and presenting here or at a public meeting, they are also working with Philip Middlemiss's class, fourth-period video class, and with Humboldt Access Television Studio, or Access Humboldt, excuse me. And they're all being videotaped in a discussion forum and then hopefully their projects will be videotaped as they happen. So that's another aspect of it that's happening. And it's a really organic thing that's happening and it's really student-driven. And it's wonderful to be a part of that. So I just wanted you to know those couple of things about it. So the other thing that I'd like to speak about is I'm following up on a letter that I wrote and sent to the board members and administration about how concerned I am about the documentation of service hours that students are performing. As I just mentioned a moment ago, that students truly believe in service. They really believe in community service. They seek it out. I've been asked countless times this year why there isn't any information in the bulletin about community service. Where are the opportunities? So for the last 15 years, we've had a person, thankfully through grant funding, who did all that and now there's no one. No one's taking on that role. But the piece that's missing is we have a culture of kids who already know how to do it and they know what it feels like to do it and they want to do it even if it's not in the bulletin. We can seek those things out for them or they seek them out for themselves. But what's happening is that there's no point person for them to turn their hours into. Nobody's collecting their hours. No one's documenting it. And the students are starting to wonder about that. Like, where do we take our paper? I mean, I want to turn in my 23 hours of service. I want recognition for that. And so one of the things that I think is possible, it seems like an easy fix. It seems like it would be, it would take a little amount of time each week for someone to input the hours into the Power School or the, it's somewhere inside Power School. Sue Murray put it in there. But we can't, we can't let it go. If we don't start, it's already the end of the first semester, if we don't start, then pretty soon the students will see that no one is collecting them and why are we doing them? And so it's a really big piece. It might seem like a small thing, but it's huge. And if we want to keep that culture going, we just, I am appealing to you to help me figure out how we can make that happen. So if you have any ideas, just let me know. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
I would like to, in some way, follow up on that, so I don't know quite how we would do it, but I would like to see that we follow up on that and see what we can come up with. And maybe Stephanie can give us a few ideas or something, but I don't, just want it to come here and drop, is what I'm saying. So however, we need to keep it in our minds and do something about it. We need to do that because service learning is very, very important and it's very important for our students.
You can ask for it to be placed on the next agenda.
Well, I'm not sure a discussion is what we need because she kind of outlined it. I think we need to come up with a point person to try to see if we can't find a point person and I don't think a discussion here would do that. So I'm asking.
Would it be an appropriate report from the principal of Eureka High School?
It would and it could be also some...
Could we put that on the agenda for January?
Yeah.
Please.
Got that, Mickey?
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Items M15 to M30. Any comments by the board or...
I'd like to pull M25 for further discussion, which is the Change Eureka Adult School Concurrent Petition Allowing Independent Studies Students to Enroll in Adult Education Classes. I'd like more information on that. I believe I spoke or emailed Dr. Lentz.
Are you pulling it for a discussion action or just discussion?
Discussion action.
Okay.
Any other items? Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar with the exception of M25?
So moved.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. I will be abstaining on this vote. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so those items carry. Item M25.
Yes, there is a need for students to be concurrently enrolled in adult education who are also high school students. And I've asked Sandi Phillips and Sherri Jensen to be prepared to address the need for this.
So historically, Eureka Adult School has not... Eureka Adult School has...
That's the big term gone.
We didn't say make it for short people. We just said...
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Okay, so what we're addressing here is the need for Center for Independent Studies students who are severely lacking in credits and would like to graduate with their class and need that concurrent credit recovery by coming to adult education the same way that we provide concurrent enrollment opportunities for credit recovery for the Zoe Barnum students and the Eureka High School students. We have not allowed it in the past because there was an issue of ADA collection in both pots and there was a double-dipping issue. And so on our concurrent petition, on the old concurrent petition, it states independent studies students may not attend Eureka Adult School concurrently. Because we are no longer collecting ADA at the adult school, we would like to grab that opportunity to help the students who need that extra push to go ahead and finish up and get that credit recovery they need so that they can graduate with their class.
How many students on independent study are there and how many of them potentially qualify for this concurrent enrollment?
One of the challenges that comes up is sometimes students move from Eureka High School as a credit-deficit student and they enter the Center for Independent Study and we only allow up to seven periods. If they're a current Eureka High School student, they can only earn seven periods of credit through Center for Independent Study. That's one problem. The other is some transfer into Center for Independent Study and are already concurrently enrolled. So they're a Eureka High School student, concurrently enrolled, but then when they get into Center for Independent Study, we have kind of a challenge because they were already taking adult school classes. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. My concern is the status of the students. If they are on independent study, their need to attend classes would be similar as if they weren't on independent study.
Their need to attend classes? I'm not quite sure what the question is. Can I, I think I can speak to that. Concurrent, concurrent enrollment at the adult school for credit recovery is offered in a very similar way we do also independent study. It's one-on-one instruction for each student and they are in a confined environment with one instructor. They take the work home. So it's a very similar format that they're already familiar with.
That answers it. Thank you.
Any other question or discussion on M25? Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval of M26?
Actually, I had some additional or an additional question, consideration. I think you should indicate what your comment is and then I had a comment, too, before we move to vote.
Yeah, I'm concerned that the regulations, laws concerning independent study may not be fully fleshed out here. Have you looked at those? And there's no prohibition in the laws concerning independent study for concurrent enrollment in adult education in the state of California?
There is not, that I could find in addition. I can, I can read you the ed code right now that describes concurrent enrollment in general. This isn't specific for independent study, but I do want to assure you that I contacted our state representative in adult education and confirmed this with her that it is okay at this point. So I spoke with Vicki Prater, who is the Adult Ed, our Adult Ed liaison. So the ed code pertinent here, well, actually, this isn't the ed code. This is the explanation of the ed code. Oh, it's right here. The description in the, this is the California State Adult Education Handbook and it states, "Enrollment of concurrent students requires a written documentation." This is the petition we're referring to. And written documentation of a counseling session, and I know this sounds not like what we were just talking about, but it does tie in. "Between the certificated representative of the high school and the pupil's parent, guardian, or caregiver, a school record of the session shall include a statement that the pupil is voluntarily enrolling," so we can't make them come, "in the Adult Ed program and that the program will enhance the pupil's progress towards meeting their educational requirements for graduating from high school. High school students may attend adult education after, adult education classes after attending the regular day as defined by the local governing board." And that's where you guys come in. And those are ed code 52500.1 and 48200. So basically, the ed code applicable here is speaking to not supplanting. It's speaking to making sure that the students have the option to make a choice to come or not. They can't come to, they can't be forced to come to adult education. You can't offer classes that aren't offered at the high school and then require it. And we have to have a petition documenting all of those things have happened. So the counselor has been involved, the teacher, and the parent.
I have a question that is, maybe that's not a question, it's just, we have the current policy because of the ADA collection for adult education.
Correct.
That's gone away, but it's coming back, potentially. So would we need to reflect that on this new, so that we don't forget about it two or three years down the road, that this needs to be revisited?
I'm not sure that that would be reflected in the petition itself because the petition is the contract between the parent, the student, and the teacher. But you're right, we do need to have some sort of tickle file somewhere to bring that back up in case I'm not here. Because I won't forget.
Well, and that's what I was thinking, maybe since it says in, you know, in the old one, it said what couldn't happen. And the new one is that this petition will be granted until ADA collection reoccurs and then it would have to be revisited or something to that. Just a line in there that when we're looking at it, we kind of go, oh, because none of us at this point now are here. I mean, let's...
Right, right.
It's just a thought so that it doesn't...
So...
It's a tickle file thought.
So is this something that we want to bring back to the board after we've composed this sentence or do we want to compose the sentence now and agree on it? Because we would sure love to serve the students who are waiting come January.
My recommendation, if we're going to add that sentence, we do it tonight and be done with it.
All right.
But that's just my recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, so let's add it.
I'm a little uncomfortable composing another sentence just so we can get it through faster. It doesn't sound like it was researched as thoroughly as it might have been or considered as thoroughly. I would rather have it resubmitted and come back to the consent agenda in our January meeting. That's my opinion.
So it's more than just the sentence that you're concerned about? It's some additional research into some of the issues that Rich brought up, Dr. Lentz brought up? Is that your, my understanding of what you're...
I would like his assurance that it is...
Legal.
Legal and appropriate.
We'll be back to the consent...
Okay.
But doesn't that mean then that the students...
Yeah, I'm not...
The students who start in January, because that's the new, isn't that when the new...
January 20th is the new semester.
So would we have time, would we have time to do it and get it taken care of? We have a board meeting on the...
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth. It would be time enough, okay. Because I don't think it's necessary to wait on it myself.
Okay, so that will be brought back on the January board meeting consent calendar. Okay, item O33 has been moved up. This is Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps' proposal to change to Eureka Navy National Defense Cadet Corps. Take it away.
All right. Those of you who don't know, I'm the junior ROTC and I see our cadets out here, probably dressed, waiting to speak. I will be fairly short but pretty informative. All right, so we are the Eureka Junior ROTC. Go ahead. We need to change into what's called the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps. Are we out here? Next. Okay. The fiscal year 2010, we had 639 junior ROTCs. Because of the federal budget, in June 2012, this coming June, they're going to cut down to 611. We were, Eureka, I was one of the 29 schools chosen to be disestablished. Okay, the fiscal year 2016, by then, they're going to cut all the way down to 556 junior ROTCs throughout the nation and abroad. By contract with the Navy, the school district and the school district, a healthy program consists of 100 cadets and two instructors. Currently, we are at about 73 cadets and one instructor. So they went through, everybody who did not have 100 cadets, two instructors, they chose to disestablish them. In response, there was a lot of public outcry. In response to that, Navy offered what's called a Navy National Defense Cadet Corps to the disestablished units. With that, you only need one instructor and 50 cadets. There are some drawbacks, though. Next. Okay, so, the Navy will no longer pay a portion of the instructor's salary. So in our case, it's approximately $29,000, $28 upper end rounded up to $29,000. They won't pay for military transportation. Last year, the Navy flew us on our orientation trip. Every year, we go on a trip to various bases and whatnot. They flew us from Reading on military aircraft down to San Diego where we visited bases and they flew us back. They will no longer pay for transportation. And they will no longer pay for new uniforms for us. So all the uniforms that we get, we have to, we have to keep, okay? Now, there's an upside to that. I can't barter with other units that are shutting down. If you choose to keep us, I can get uniforms from other units that are shutting down and we can... and we can get their, their uniforms, so I can stockpile stuff. Okay? I got a little plan. All right. But as an NDCC, we will, go ahead, keep all the existing uniforms that we do have, and equipment, such as drill rifles and things like that. Next. They will continue to send us upgraded curriculum. So we will still get books, we will still get audiovisual stuff, everything we need to teach a class, they will still send us. Okay? Next. We can still train on military bases, so we can still go there. We just have to find our way there and pay for it ourselves. Okay? All right. Continue. Next. We still provide advancement for military enlistment. So the guys who choose the military, they get ranked up, three ranks. And we have some of those folks here today, and hopefully they'll speak for a call. Go ahead. Okay? Provide ROTC scholarships. Next. Students can earn up to four college credits per year for taking my class through Adams College in Leadership, that's a lot of credits. Next. Stand. Okay, so summer activities, we have, where you at, Leano? Stand up. We have Cadet Leano, and is Ms. Hang here? Ms. Hang, stand up. They are both applying for the Summer NJROTC STEM Program down at San Diego State this summer. Leadership Academies. Last year, we sent three cadets to Hawaii Leadership Academy and two cadets to the Northwest Leadership Academy up in Washington State. Service Academy appointments, we can offer Service Academy appointments for those cadets who score high on their SATs and whatnot for West Point Naval Academy. Okay, NDCC and Maritime Studies. Since the Navy is no longer going to help fund us, and we need to bolster our cadets, since we've been averaging about in the 70s for the last three or four years. So in order to get a non-military side, more of a civilian side, job training side, that I already have the curriculum for, we are planning on having maritime studies, job training in the Maritime Ministry. Okay? All right. So once students graduate from, from high school, they can get jobs as ordinary sailors, deckhands, engineering wipers, stewards, commercial fishermen, you know? And so it's right out of high school, getting a high-paying job, a high-paying job. Okay? Qualifications, 18 years of age. You need to get a TWIC card, and that's just a background check, make sure you're not a terrorist and things like that. Okay? Next. All right. They apply for the Merchant Mariners Certificate. Once they get that, they're it, they're going, and they can start working on any type of merchant marine. TWIC, once they get the TWIC card, it also allows them to work for Homeland Security, so they can work in airports and on the docks, and security and things like that. Next. Next. Okay, so some of the advantages. HROP agreed to a .4 to cover, cushion some of that $29,000, and Leano, would you speak on that?
Jan Moorhouse, who now is overseeing Humboldt Regional Occupational Programs, met with us, it's been a month or so, or two, maybe even ago? And I have from her a letter of support for the Marine Time Academy Program under consideration for Eureka City Schools. She wanted to make sure that the board realized that they are indeed willing to support up to a .4 FTE for the Marine Time Academy, though she did indicate final commitment to the staffing level would, of course, depend upon the successful conversion about the structure of the program, so going from NJROTC to the structure that Darren is discussing. And additionally, to make sure that there is that Marine Time or Marine pathway for the students, so that it would be a broader vocational application than the current program has. And they also did indicate that they're willing to continue to work hand-in-hand with Eureka City Schools. So she did want to let me know and let the board know of their commitment.
Great. Okay? Next. All right. So through ROP, we also discussed at that meeting, having a, having a class at the middle school level. We could funk kids up through the middle school, into Eureka High. And some of the things like marine biology, okay, maritime studies, NDCC. Okay? Next. We already have the equipment, and we already have the curriculum. We don't have to buy anything else. Maybe we'll continue to give us that stuff. Next. We have the support of the Humboldt Bay Harbor District and Aaron, Aaron, there he is, right there. He showed up, he took over Ronnie Pellegrini's place. There we go. And I'll just let Aaron say a few words real quick about the support we have from the Harbor District.
Good evening and happy holidays. I'm Aaron Newman. I'm going to introduce there, I'm the new First Division Harbor Commissioner for Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District. Kind of wanted to get that down. And I'd like to express a commitment to this program. In any way we can help the students be involved in, my end would be the commercial fishing, that's what I do for a living, and we've got ship rights, we've got bar pilots, we've got a lot of resources that we'd love to use in any way to help this program be successful. And be proud to do so. I'm 22, just graduated myself, so thank you.
I like that we get possible internships, tours, opportunities. Next. College for the maritime, summer STEM opportunities, we discussed some of that stuff. All the stuff that the NDCC kids have, the maritime kids have also, except for some of the advancement in military, but they're not going military anyway. Next. ROTC scholarships through the school site, the Cal Maritime Academy down the Bay Area. And that is a great school. If you've never been there, I suggest you go, it's fantastic. Next. Appointment to the U.S. Merchant Marine Academy. That is, when they graduate from the Merchant Marine Academy, they come out with a commission from, it's a reserve commission into the Navy. Also, they come out with a Merchant Mariners Commission. Very cool. Next. And again, up to four college credits for leadership through Adams College. Next. Our evolution, if we're not changing to get better, then we're going to be dead in the water. So we have to change, make this evolution into maybe coming from NJROTC to NDC to a Maritime Academy. Once we get the 100 students back, maybe two instructors, you know? And apply back to the junior ROTC to bring the funding back from the Navy, and, you know, maybe have HROP help us out with the second instructor or whatnot, to make that happen. Next. So, funding cadet enrollment, okay, as it allows, go back to junior ROTC. Next. Maritime Pathway brochure, I gave you guys all Maritime Pathway brochure, along with the original, I'm going to do my pen. Along with the original proposal, and the slideshow that we, that we just had. It has a four-year plan, so you can check it out. There is a article in the back of your handout also, from Marine Log, a school in Tampa Bay that started a maritime program, and it's working out very well for them, and with STEM opportunity there also. That's it. So, hope I was pretty informative, not too quick, but quick enough. Are there any questions?
Did I understand correctly that you said that if you get the program back up to 100 students, that you, the funding returns?
Pending federal, you know, funds. But yes, I have promised from the area manager, pending federal, you know, engagements. If we can get the program back, back up to 100 kids, and I can count the kids in Maritime Studies and the kids in the military and in NDC together, and I can have the 100 kids. But yes. Any other questions?
Well, if your newsletter's any indication of what a good job you can do, I, it's outstanding.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. All right.
Okay, I have some
Yeah, they look great. Yeah.
And we'll hear some public comments on people that have turned in green sheets before we bring it back to the board. The first one is Aaron Newman, and speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Okay. Nathan McCaslin?
Hello? So I'm Nathan McCaslin, I'm a cadet in NJROTC, and I'm lieutenant junior grade in the unit. And I just wanted to kind of back up with Gunnar Sergeant Hussein, and explain how the program transforming can still help students or cadets become better at their career, or whatever they want to do in life. So as a cadet in the unit, I've reached the officer side of NJROTC, and through the program, I'm actually now a private first class in the Army National Guard. So it's helped me enormously. I feel that the class can put anyone on a really good, like, job, career path, anything like that, even for those who don't want to join the military, it gives them really invaluable or indispensable skills. One thing it taught me was this thing called tact, or being able to work with people, or, you know, enduring other people, their comments, whatever they say, their moods, how they're feeling, because it's going to happen. One day, you're going to be placed in a situation that's not all about you, leave your ego at the door. Basically, you're going to be in a situation where it's bigger than you. It's not about you, it's about other people. And there's going to be people with different personalities, different traits, different attitudes, different beliefs, and you're going to have to learn how to work with them in a good way and get the job done. So basically, my definition of tact with this would be working in a good manner with someone while keeping good relations and getting the job done. So because of this, I think the class is a great way to put someone on a good start in their whole life, and really, that's all I got to say about it, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Cadet Hannah Ford. I am ranked ensign in the NJROTC, and I am also the public affairs officer, so I write the newsletter. So I wanted to talk to you guys about what NJROTC does for students. Starting my freshman year here, I didn't want anything to do with the program, honestly. My dad had been trying, you know, "Do NJROTC, do NJROTC," and I'm like, that's not me, you know? I couldn't see myself marching in a uniform. I'd always been into music and art, and that's what I liked. But finally, after talking to some of the cadets, I said, "Yeah, hey, why not? Give it a try, you know, something new." And I, before NJROTC, I didn't have any clue what I really wanted to do in life. I didn't feel like I fit in with anybody that I, you know, was friends with. But then I joined NJROTC halfway through my freshman year, and it clicked. I felt like I belonged. I made tons of new friends. It was like a second family to me. Before the program, I had never heard of the Marine Corps, and now that is what I'm set on in life. I want to be an officer in the Marine Corps. I'm trying to get into, hopefully, the Naval Academy, and if not that, get an ROTC scholarship to a college and be in the NROTC, take the Marine Corps pathway, and commission as a second lieutenant in the Marine Corps. I've never felt stronger about anything in my life. That is what I'm going to do. Everybody's trying to convince me, "Oh, you should do this, you should do that." I was telling them, "No, I'm going to be an officer in the Marine Corps." And that's what NJROTC has done for me. So this year, I'm a junior, and next year, even if we just have the NDCCC, it will still help so much, and having the program around, I know, can help other students that were like me, you know, freshmen don't have any clue what they want to be, you know? Even sophomores, juniors that still don't know what they want to do. You know, give something new a try. And NJROTC sets so many kids out on the right path. It's a really great program, so it helps kids a lot. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Comer. Like some of the other cadets have said, ROTC helps you a lot to grow as a person and to kind of find out what you want to do in life. Before I got into ROTC, I also didn't have a clue what I wanted to do. I liked the military, I liked what it represented, but I didn't know a lot about it. And once I got into ROTC, I was like, "Wow, this is cool, this is what I could do. I finally have something that, you know, I click with." And so after a while, I decided that, "Hey, I want to see what the Marines are about, and I want to see what they can do for me." So I go down and talk to the recruiter, and he's like, "Wow, you've been in ROTC? This is, you know, just a step up from that, I think you'll really enjoy it." So once I got into it, I got signed up, and he told me that when you go to boot camp, he's like, "Hey, I don't," I didn't know what it was about in the first place either. I know it's kind of nerve-wracking, but you can get through anything that you put your mind to, and ROTC's going to help you do that. So, yeah.
Hello, I'm private first class Benjamin Davison. I am currently in the California National Guard. I joined the ROTC my freshman year. I've been doing it for four years. I am now a senior. When I first started, I was kind of a shy person. I didn't really like to talk to many people. And, but as I started to go through the class, I started to find that, come out of the area of, like, the class, and being around people. So I started to come out of my shell. And as I started to come out to the class, like, I learned how to be more like a leader and how to organize my life. So all I can say is the ROTC can help anybody. If they can help me, they can help you.
Hi, my name is Tucker Duke, and I'm a chief petty officer in the Eureka's NJROTC. And my life in NJROTC is going pretty good so far. This program has helped me feel like a new man. What do I mean by that? I'll tell you all why. This program helped my confidence build up. They helped me lose a whole lot of weight besides PE, and they appreciated and respected every effort I gave them. I had recently completed my first basic, or shall I say advanced, leadership training, or BLT for short. It was hard and tough, but whatever why, all I know is that I fought through it. I have so far been awarded six times and ranked up to chief petty officer despite having autism. This program has had a major impact on my life. When I first joined this program, I almost When I first joined this program, I almost had a feeling that joining NJROTC might have been a bad idea because Gunnery Sergeant, in my perspective, was a scary guy when I first met him. But when I, but when I went to my first trip to San Diego, I had a chance to know him more and I liked it. I always have a feeling that this should have its very own Hall of Fame. I participate on some activities and I come out clean in the end, so soon when I graduate, I might become one thing that people might soon want to become: a legend.
Is this on? Oh, okay. Bear with me, I stutter a little bit when I'm nervous. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and fellow cadets, Gunnery Sergeant and adults. I'm cadet ensign Glenn Lyons, currently enrolled in the NJROTC program here at Eureka High School. The program personally has done for me a lot more than anything else in my life. It taught me what it means to be a leader and how to muster my full potential, which honestly, before this, I wasn't interested in, I just wanted to be lazy. NJROTC is really an extraordinary asset to students nationwide, along with providing substantial financial compensation for higher education. It also offers very many extracurricular activities. Instilled students who are, instilled students who join are the disciplines of honor, courage, and commitment, our core values, as well as learning hands-on the importance of maturity and teamwork. These values and instruction have shaped me from misguided youth into the mature young man I am today. They have transformed my future from a bleak outlook to a promising ladder of success. Not only has the program given me the assets needed to prosper, but also the extraordinary impetus I needed to become a combat medic for this great nation. But perhaps most importantly is the broad spectrum appeal of NJROTC. While it is a military class, many students are enrolled who wish to live civilian lives in a private sector. The promising new maritime studies class will expand the crowd into a much larger demographic. I believe that every person in the NJROTC program, under the instruction of the very professional Gunnery Sergeant Darren Smith, will be primed and perfected to go out and achieve their dreams. Thank you.
Hello, I am cadet lieutenant Kahuali. I've been in the unit since, I've been in the junior ROTC program for four years. This program has taught me many leadership skills. I have been in the class since my freshman year. I have became a better person, teammate, and leader. My attitude has changed since I've been here. Before joining this class, I used to not care about anything and didn't know what I wanted out of life. Since I've been in this class, I strive to work hard and I became a better student and raised my grades. I have set goals for myself to achieve. I'm possibly joining the military or going to Universal Technical Institute to study automotive. I have participated in many community services such as helping the elderly, Toys for Tots, and helping with Veterans Day celebrations. I hope you vote to keep NJROTC as a NNDCC for following cadets. Thank you.
Hello, my name is cadet Lieutenant Junior Gray Graven. Before I came to Eureka High School, I was in a program called Young Marines. We helped out the community sometimes, but not a lot, not as much as we do here. But when I first got here, we were doing things all the time, like in the first month, did like 20 events, everything. One of the major works we do here is Toys for Tots and every time I do that, get a great feeling out of that, people come to me, say thank you for all your help and everything, people give us hugs, sometimes they cry. It's a great feeling to help out and the reason why I did it was because of this class. If I didn't, if I wasn't in this class, I wouldn't know of any of this stuff and I wouldn't be able to help the community. Also, I went to a program called Della Pups. If you see anybody with the red cord on, we all went down to San Diego Camp Pelletin for 10 days and because of that, also it saw more discipline and also made me a better citizen in the country we live right now. So, if it wasn't for this class, I wouldn't know anything about that, also about the military, reason why I thought you'd signed up, you gotta be in there. But after going to the class, found there's a lot more and there's a lot more opportunities to do too. And I wouldn't be able to know this without Gunnery Sergeant Smith and everything. So, it'd be, it'd be nice if you guys kept on this class next year so we could help out future cadets, like help them get knowledge about their career and other career paths they can take besides just the military, like maritime studies and everything. So, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Robert Vealick. I'm a parent of two of my daughters in NJROTC. And I gotta tell you, I got a bit of fun out of them when I was in school, but I didn't realize all the benefits that were accompanied, accompanied the NJROTC. My daughters, as such, when they were going to school, the difference between, I have five kids altogether, two of my boys have graduated high school. My daughters are absolutely stellar at school. They taught them a lot, a lot more about responsibility and I see the difference between all my kids. As smart as my daughters go, I see a big difference in what this program and Darren has done for them. You know, I have nothing but great things to say for Darren and I hope that you guys keep this program intact. It's a big benefit to our community and to the academy. So, that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
My name is cadet William Nichols. I am the commanding, cadet commanding officer of the unit. So, I'm a senior this year, I've been in the unit since I was a freshman. Since joining the unit, I've got to go all over. I've been, I got sent to Philadelphia for free. American Veterans California sent me for a leadership conference, I got to go there. I met kids from all over that were in NJROTCs, MCROTCs, you know. And it's a general feeling amongst all states, of all the kids, they all love their program. They're all dedicated to the program. Every kid you see here in a uniform tonight is dedicated to this program. When I joined my freshman year, I didn't really have a plan. I thought I was gonna be a professional skateboarder. But now I have a plan, okay? Because of this class, I'm a private first class in the Marine Corps. I'm already an E2. So, when I go to basic in August, I'll be making $700 more than the average Joe next to me, you know? Because of this class, I'll be set off better. If it wasn't for this class, I wouldn't be here right now. I would be crumpled in front of this board. I wouldn't, there's no way I'd be able to talk right now. For this class, I was pretty shy, I didn't like talking to anybody, I didn't know or anything. But through all the leadership training I've gone to, I've been in charge of probably 200 different kids I've never known in my life. When Comer and Curtis and I went to Hawaii, for example, I was one of the cadets that went to Hawaii, that's why we had the silver cord. Anyone with silver cord, right hand shoulder, just gone to a leadership academy over the summer. We were in charge of anywhere from 50 to 60 kids we'd never met in our lives, kids from Guam, Japan, Korea, Vietnam, anywhere that was an ROTC, we were, we all got taken turns being leaders, you know? And that's what this class is more than anything, non-military class, but leadership civilian class, okay? Everyone will learn how to lead, everyone will learn how to follow, and everyone's just become better people. So, to get rid of this class, I feel would be a poor decision, even that in NDC. We won't change at all, just our name, we'll operate the same, we'll do community service. You know, we got Toys for Tots this weekend, we're still going to that, we'll be doing it next year. I mean, Marine Corps needs us, community needs us, and we'll be there for you. Thank you, guys.
That's the end of the green sheets, but is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this?
I would like to speak to this.
My name is Daniel Alzberger, I stand in the NJROTC. I've been in the military for 18 years and retired as a rescue swimmer. Commander Durkey was the one that made the city into a military city. There's only two in the nation, Detroit City and Eureka, California. I've seen various instructors come through the program. I've seen this program grow, I've seen it diminished, but to help these kids better themselves, give them self-esteem, as you saw, there's a different variety of students here in this class. It's kind of like a family. They suffer from different handicaps, different learning disabilities, but it gives them a self to be able to be one with the community, one with themselves, and one with the NJROTC. And to keep a program like this is vital, it's paramount to us. Because this way, we could see our young group grow up and it gives, it gives them something back into the community. So, to keep this program is paramount and that's all I needed to say. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public?
My name is Valerie Gardner, I'm the assistant principal here at Eureka High School. And I wasn't planning on saying anything except that I know that Kathy Pony Gardner and I both are bursting with pride right now. Back about four years ago, when we first got here to the high school as assistant principals, we started with so many of these seniors. So, raise your hand if you're a senior. And I remember distinctly working with many of these kids who were our skaters. And all the different kids that fit in here and they're such an eclectic group and yet they all, Darren does this amazing job of bringing them together to create such a strong, strong unit. So, I just give you a lot of credit for that. It takes a real leader to do that and it's incredibly fulfilling to be able to watch this for us and I'm sure I'm speaking for Kathy too. That's very cool.
Good evening, I'm cadet and senior Cheryl Beach. I started this program last year as sophomore. I, sorry, I just forgot what to say. I joined NJROTC kind of skeptical, skeptical about, you know, what I was gonna do in it, but like after, you know, a month in it, I was like, I really like this, I could see myself going far. And now I'm an officer rank in NJROTC and I plan on listening to military after my senior year of high school in the Marine Corps. I never would have thought I would have done that without this program. I had no idea where I was going. I didn't even know if I was gonna go to college because, you know, just looking at my older siblings, they didn't exactly make the right decisions. But being in high school at NJROTC gave me good work ethic and I started to do so much better in life and I know I'll get there with this program. So, I think that it's good to have Ron for kids, you know, that I am, in the same situations. That way, they can make it to where they want to go in life and better themselves. Thank you.
Any other members of the public before I bring it back to the board? Okay, board members.
I would just like to give you an example of a student I had in the fifth grade, one of the brightest students I had ever had, who did nothing. And no matter what you did, he did nothing, except cause problems in the class and entertain the rest of the group. And I really thought to myself, you know, he's gonna grow up to be nothing because he won't do anything. One day, I was coming up after graduation up from Albee Stadium and this young man approached me in uniform. He was in the eighth grade and I think was the only student they've ever had that was actually allowed to go in in the eighth grade. And he came up to me and he said, Mrs. Taplin, you were right. I really need to apply myself because I am a smart kid. And he said, I'm going to, he said, I'm in NJROTC and I'm going to stay with it and I'm going to be an officer. And I thought to myself, he has the right attitude, he was very, very serious and I was kind of trying to get away from him at first because I thought, oh dear. But we had a nice conversation. He went, he did not get into Annapolis the first year, the first time he applied. He went to a Navy school that's right there by Annapolis at the Quantico. Yeah, the Navy Academy Prep School. Then he was appointed to Annapolis. He graduated from Annapolis with honors. I was invited to his wedding in the chapel at Annapolis and he married the daughter of his commanding officer. So, he has done, and I've kept in contact with him and he has done very, very well. He still has the pen I gave him when he graduated from high school and he, you know, if he lets you use it, he takes it, makes sure he gets it back. But that was one experience I will not ever forget. And as far as I'm concerned, this program is something that does build character and it's really, really important that we keep it and support it.
Other board members?
Congratulations to all the students. You have represented your program very well and you speak eloquently. I want to congratulate you for the support you're showing. But I do have other questions. When we're talking about a point four being supported by HROP, what kind of offset is that? And is the 29,000 that Gunnery Sergeant brought up, is that a total, the total commitment or is our commitment beyond that with benefits and all of that? I need a more clearly defined picture.
Okay, so I'll start with the HROP aspect of it. To clarify, there is, there is the point four FTE commitment by them, however, there's some conditions that would need to occur of what Darren and I have spoken about. For example, they really want it to be, to have more breadth, which he explained today about how it would have really three kinds of tracks, the current sort of military track, being able to work in vocational fields that the Harbor Commission would be involved in, and then a college pathway track. And so, they do really want to see those kinds of expansion from the current program, though Jan Morehouse did indicate it wouldn't be an additional point four ROP, FTE for the district. So, we would have to look at where our ROP programs are currently here at Eureka High and make some changes. So, and I'm just gonna use a broad number, it won't be the correct number, but if we have approximately five FTE of HROP classes, it would stay five. Okay? In terms of cost, the part that he mentioned up there is the amount of funding that we're losing because of the naval pulling out, the additional costs we've always been supporting. So, I don't know if that's helpful. So, we would end up then, would the point four FTE offset the loss? More than likely, yes, but again, it impacts other ROP programs.
And at what point would we know what programs it would impact?
My, I think that comes after, to some degree, the budget meeting because, or the budget, what we're gonna have here from our chief business official, because it is also this time of year where we have to look at what kind of funds we have as a district and the impact that could have on any program or any service that we provide. So, I would anticipate that January and February will be very busy as we really look at our resources and what that means in terms of what we can fund. resources and what that means in terms of what we can fund, as well as, of course, the declining enrollment. So that's kind of the window I see that we would need to dig into a lot of questions about what next year's going to look like, including this one.
Thank you. Wendy, Susan, any questions?
Okay, I've been a strong supporter of the NJRO T C for years and I understand that this change, even with H R O P's help, means that there was an additional expense to the district and we're going into a really tough budget year. But I'd like to make it clear that this is a very high priority for me.
One of the things I should add as information for the board to consider as we make these decisions, it's my understanding if we don't offer some type of program like what is being recommended, our ability to then reapply for an NJRO T C program is diminished. Is that accurate?
If we don't go in the N D C C? Yes. If we cut it off totally, you would have to reapply and that's a two-year waiting list right now. So in the event of when it goes in fiscal year 2016, when it goes down to 556 units, the chances of us going back after you completely cut it out was very small.
So I thought the board should also have that information. What I see, John, too, is that it may be part of that fiscal decision when the board does make decisions, because today's just a discussion item, but I wanted the board to have the information about options for this program.
Keep in mind that there's a cost to continuing this program, but there's also a cost to ending it. So I, assume we're going to see this on future agenda? January, you think, or?
I'm thinking, well, it depends on when the board wants to, well, now I'm coming, I'm putting the cart before the horse a little bit with the next presentation, but one of the recommendations that we will be making is that we are going to have to have at some point a special board meeting on fiscal. I'm sorry. And so it may be one meeting. I would probably anticipate it being at least two. That's been our, how we've done historically where the first one really is discussion, getting more information, directing staff to bring to the board some additional input, and then the final action is taken at a later board meeting. That may not necessarily be a special one, but I see that at least one more special board meeting is in our near future.
Okay. So with no further discussion, we'll move back to N 31, First Interim Budget Report.
Let them go home.
And so if...
Probably have to march in or something.
Doesn't sound like we have to.
How many seniors do you have now? Out of seventy kids?
Okay, the governing board is being asked to discuss, receive, and self-certify that the Eureka City Schools 2011, 12 First Interim Report is qualified. The qualified certification means that based upon current projections, the district may not meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year or two subsequent fiscal years. So...
So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Paul Ziegler and he has the information that the board needs to consider.
And I see that once again I've been able to clear out a room without saying the words. Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present our First Interim Financial Report. I'm going to try to keep my attention this way, but with this thing over here and we'll see how this all, how it all does shake out. John kind of read this intro in terms of what the action is that we'll be requesting tonight, but to kind of synthesize, we will ask that the governing board self-certify that Eureka City Schools First Interim Report is qualified. And as John said earlier, a qualified certification means the district may not meet, may not be able to meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year or the two subsequent years. Also point out the certification, the First Interim Report is an annual requirement. We'll do it this year and we'll do it in years following as well. I'm going to cut to kind of the punchline, if you will, and we'll go through various information to get there, but what we really have at this point is a cash concern. We'll see as we move into the 12, 2012-13 projection that by the end of 2012-13, we're projecting a negative cash position. And that really is the reason that we are coming to you with the recommendation to certify as qualified. A little background, this is a process that all districts go through throughout the state and it's the annual cycle reporting to the state. If you look at the top of the cycle there, by July 1st of each year, we're bidding to put together our annual operating budget. It's submitted to the County Office of Education for review and approval by that time. The next step in the budget cycle is where we are right now. By December 15th, we need to certify our First Interim Report. It's based on information that cuts off as of October 31st. It gives us a little bit of time, six weeks or so, to put together the information to be presented, to be reviewed, and then ultimately to be sent on to the county office and to the state for their review and approval. At this point, we bring together updates from the closing of the prior year, things that have changed since the start of this school, entitlement updates, revenue flows that come into us, those type of things. Next stage in the process comes in March, comes through at March 15th, at which point we bring our Second Interim Report before the board for review and approval. That is based on a cutoff date of January 31st. The really great news is in six weeks, we get to do this all over again and the cycle continues. At that point, we would also include as part of our projections, staffing updates, ADA updates, ADA being what drives many of our revenue projections, and the other entitlement updates, changes that may occur with Title I and some of the different programs that are out there and the revenues that we would expect to see. By June 30th, we make our final budget adjustments for the current year. And then by September 15th, we submit our unaudited actuals and that really is the wrap-up of that particular annual cycle. Interestingly, we're already on September 15th when we do that and yet we've already submitted the subsequent year's budget. So there's a little bit of an overlap that occurs there. What I want to take you through tonight is kind of a multi-tiered look, if you will, at our fiscal situation. And it encompasses a look at where we are right now, our current outlook. We'll also talk about some of the variances from our budget adoption, the budget that was adopted by the board in June of 2011 that covers the 11-12 school year, and then also talk about our multi-year projections, the 2012-13 and 2013-14 projections and what we can anticipate in those two, those two following years. Before I jump into the next series of slides, and I will tell you, there's lots of numbers to go through. That's the wonderful thing about numbers, there's lots of them. But in your packets, in your First Interim Reports, as you look at, I think it's probably the second tab there, there's something called Criteria and Standards. And I think from the board's perspective, that's something that you're going to want to focus on and take a good look at. In essence, it sets up lots of different questions and metrics that we are, that we're viewed by and that we're measured by. And you'll see in there, things that, in particular areas, there might be something that says met and not met. And really concentrating on those areas where we have not met would be a good thing for you to do. And those are where, that's a good place for you to ask questions, say, why are we outside of this particular percentage or whatever the different metric is that's being used to measure that particular item? I don't have my, I'm not open with anything here, but for instance, we may have a difference in terms of a revenue projection from budget adoption to First Interim. And it would be appropriate to ask the reason, why do we have a not met in that particular area? So there's just kind of an example of how really to use the First Interim Report and not get bogged down necessarily in all the numbers that are going to follow there. Not that we don't like numbers, not that we don't want to talk about them, but it's a good shortcut to really seeing the areas where we might have a legitimate concern that needs to be addressed. And I feel like I just leaned into a left hook when I said that. So, see, these are some of the conditions that are impacting First Interim, the environment that we put together our budget, if you will. And probably the most significant and the one that has gotten a lot of play along the way is the potential revenue limit trigger. We can say that it is no longer a potential revenue limit trigger. It actually has occurred and LeAnn read something from the Superintendent of State Education that talked about his view on the changes that have been made and what the governor's edicts have done for us. So I want to touch on that for just a moment and we can come back to that a little bit later if you'd like. Originally, there was an estimate of 1.1 million in revenue reduction. That's what the impact could have been to Eureka City Schools. Through the softer trigger that's been pulled, if you will, the actual impact to us has been lessened considerably. And origin, as we put together our budget for First Interim, we had expected a revenue reduction of about $950,000 for the revenue limit piece alone. Another $180,000 or so would have been the transportation cut. The transportation cut stays in place, but that $950,000 reduction of revenue that we had first anticipated has turned out to be about a $50,000 revenue reduction. So that's really good news from our perspective. We were spared, at least for the interim, the full brunt of having to take that revenue limit cut. Good news and bad news and back and forth. And so we were spared losing that full $950,000. But of the money that was spared, if you will, which is in the neighborhood of about $650,000 as it all comes together, one thing I want to point out about that is we don't get all that money because there's also a deferral of that money as it comes through. The net impact is that we will probably be able to add to our operating budget as we move into Second Interim, about $350,000 more than what we had projected at this point in time. It's a long explanation to get there. The overall cuts or the projection that went along with it, Legislative Analyst Office had projected about a 3.7 billion shortfall in revenue, up to $4 billion would have been the full trigger. Department of Finance came out in the last couple of days with a $2.2 billion shortfall in their revenue projection, and that's why the full impact of the cuts are not hitting us at this point. I will also say that we're not out of the woods. What Governor Brown had to say along with his announcement as to what the trigger would look like is that he is geared for additional cuts next year if need be, more than $1 billion in additional cuts if the initiative that he intends to put on the ballot for November 2012 isn't passed. And that's a roughly $7 billion increase in sales and income taxes, with a large portion of that going to public education. So again, I say that we're not out of the woods. The state's fiscal situation has not improved markedly. It behooves us, I think, to be as prudent as we can be in deploying our resources, tightening our belts, whatever analogy you want to use there. And we'll hear more about that as we go forward.
So you think those additional cuts would come in the form of more mid-year budget cuts next year or would it be for the start of the school year?
It's hard to say, John, and that's what makes planning so very, very interesting. We'll know what those numbers kind of look like and I think that's similar to what we had to do this year. We'll estimate what that impact would be and we'll kind of, we'll salt it away to the side. We'll want to be optimistic, but we also have to look at a worser case scenario and be prepared for that to happen. He did say no additional mid-year cuts this year, so we're through with that at this point. But not knowing until November 2012 if it's going to happen puts us in a very similar situation that we went through this year. The other thing that came along with what the governor had to say is apparently the trigger language was popular with our own state legislators, but it also had something to do with the financial market. So those folks that give credit rating to California and help us get bonds sold and those kind of things were happy to see that there was a built-in metric that would be followed if we missed a particular target. And in essence, Governor Brown said, expect to see additional trigger language in budgets as we go forward.
And just to clarify, I was able to catch some of his talk yesterday. And what went asked directly by some of the reporters in the audience, you know, what can we expect for K-12 education? Will we see any more cuts? And he said that even as early as his January projection, or whatever that's called that he does in January, that we can expect further cuts in K-12 education.
For next year?
Yes. Without, regardless of whether or not the tax proposal moves forward and is voted upon, because he won't know if it's approved either, so he has to start putting them into place when their budget needs to be approved.
It all contributes to a very unsettled picture, to put it mildly. So other factors that we considered as we were putting the budget together, the ongoing state fiscal crisis, continuing cash deferrals, our own declining enrollment here within the district, our ERA funds run out at the end of this year. We have increasing special education costs, including the chargeback from Humboldt County Office of Education. The number right now that has increased, our overall contribution since budget adoption, we have to put in another $675,000 to cover our special education costs. And that's not a year-over-year increase. That's a year over where we were when we adopted the budget for 11-12. So that's a very significant number to us.
Right. And you know, what I can do is share a little bit more specificity with that. There basically have been two impacts in terms of special education with regards to the chargeback from Humboldt County Office of Education. As I think most of us are aware, the increased numbers of students identified with autism has been phenomenal. We've gone from one preschool autism program in the county, or here locally, to there are now five. Three of those programs primarily have Eureka City Schools students in them. Originally, with the way the special ed funding was structured at the SELPA, the preschool autism program was what they called off the top. So the money came right out of the money that came into the SELPA before it was distributed to the programs, thinking that all of the schools might have kids in that one class. What has happened over the last four or five years is those students ended up being pretty much all ours and they've had to add two. So they add two more classes here. We now have an infant class for students from zero to three. There's another class in the southern Humboldt area. So the SELPA Policy Council last year started talking about, is it really equitable that we're not getting charged back because we happen to be the first program? And as much as I didn't necessarily want to agree, I did agree that it wasn't equitable that we weren't being directly charged back for the services those students were receiving because it had been an off-the-top program. So starting this year, it is now more of a direct chargeback. So it really increased our costs quite a bit. I think our chargeback costs are, I think that was a big chunk of the amount you're talking about. The other thing that we saw that was very unanticipated is that I think by the time we started school, I want to say we had anywhere from approximately seven, I'd have to go back and check, new students to our district who had one-on-one aides attached to their services in their IP. So we had an obligation to meet that, of course, service, but because we didn't know they were going to move in, it was an unanticipated cost. we started school, I want to say we had anywhere from approximately seven, I'd have to go back and check, new students to our district who had one-on-one aides attached to their services in their IEP. So we had an obligation to meet that, of course, service, but because we didn't know they were going to move in, it was an unanticipated cost. So it was pretty significant when you add the two together.
In a case like that, do we reevaluate their IEPs when they come in from another district?
Do you want me to answer? Do you want me to keep answering? Oh, okay. When a student moves into your district, well, there's two factors. Some of these students were feeder school students, so we don't go through that typical evaluation process that you would do when a student has moved in from outside of our SELPA. What I, and yes, there is an evaluation process, both to, to determine whether or not a student should have that additional adult, adult support, as well as when a student should no longer require that additional adult support. The difficulty, being in special education for 20, 100 million years, is it's very hard for parents and staff to sometimes let go of that additional support because it obviously becomes very emotional and I think we would all agree that additional adult support helps, but it's trying to determine what is our obligation to that student to ensure that they are provided a free and appropriate public education. So it's, so the answer, short answer is yes.
Yeah, I just didn't want to know if we do not just take, as I say, when feeder schools are not, but say somebody from Washington or something, we really do look at it?
We do, but it typically is a course over a couple of years. It's kind of hard to make that determination within that 30-day period is what you get when they come in. So it's not usually, it's usually a long process.
So maybe it's the next year?
Or the following year. And I would have to say typically, it's not at all.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, thank you. We'll, we'll see the impact of the, the additional special education costs throughout the, the course of the conversation, whether it shows up in terms of salaries. Anyway, it's there. Couple other items that were, were the background for putting the budget together. We see increasing health and welfare benefit costs. We all know that we have continuing facility and maintenance issues to take care of. And last but not least, it translates into dwindling reserves and ending fund balances. Print's a little small, but these are some of the factors that drove some of the numbers as we put our budget together. There's more than this, but I wanted to, to highlight some of the, the most significant ones. And I'll just start out by saying that the majority of the, the rates, the per-student dollars, those type of things that we use come from School Services of California's Financial DART Board. They update that on a periodic basis to, to try to capture the, the changing trends within California and how that's going to, to affect our revenue flows. So we didn't make this stuff up. There, there is some good solid numbers with some good solid folks behind us that, that provide us those projections. So with that as a, a little bit of a, a takeoff point, we've talked about declining enrollment, but the numbers are up there in terms of our ADA projections. We were at 3792 at budget adoption. We actually saw an increase based on some encouraging enrollment trends at the start of the school year that it allowed us to push that number up to 3843. We do see continued decline in enrollment, albeit slowing, that would have the impact of moving us to 3765 and 3,752 in the next, the next two subsequent years. Our ADA is calculated at 93.5% and that's based on enrollment. So if we had 100 students enrolled, we would say that our ADA was 93.5. I want to spend a little bit of time on revenue limits since that is our most significant source of revenue. And this may be old hat to you, but we'll go through it very quickly anyway. For 1112, the amount per ADA undeficated, undeficated, the amount that we should be receiving for one full-time student is 6,535. Unfortunately, the state continues to apply a deficit factor against that full ADA. And as you can see in the next portion down for the deficit factor, it's almost a 20% discount, if you will, of what we should be receiving for a full, one full ADA. And that translates to rather than the 6,535 per student to 5,244 per student. So right off the bat, that's a, a very significant reduction that we face on an annual basis. The, the trigger language had $260 per ADA reduction and we did incorporate that into our budget. So we reduced our expected revenues by just under $950,000. For our two multi-year projections, 2012 and 2012-13 and 2013-14, there is a projected COLA, that is cost of living increase. That's the good news. The bad news is that the state doesn't have the money to fund that. So State Service, School Services of California basically says, don't budget a COLA increase into your revenue limit for the two, the two multi-year projections. And we followed that advice.
So the good news is there's a COLA and the bad news is it's 0%.
Yeah, so our expenses go up, but we don't get the corresponding revenue that goes along with that. Right. We talked about the home-to-school transportation a little bit and that is a real hit that, that will come to us of about $187,000. That is not budgeted at this point, but we will have that into our, our second interim budget. Moving on to federal revenues, again, mentioned the loss of ERA funds. We had about $400,000. It was a carryover from the Ed, Education Jobs Fund that we utilized this year. That goes away at the end of this year along with the other, the other ERA funds that we were able to use in 2009, 10, and 2010, 11. Those numbers are going to get to me at a certain point. Our prior year revenue is up about 1.2 million from, from, from budget adoption and that is due in most part to a Title I carryover. We didn't fully spend our Title I monies in 2010, 11 and had a special exemption from the state because of the ERA funds for the most part to carry over more than the 15% that we're entitled to carry over on an annual basis. That number equated about 1.2 million. We've not budgeted a carryover for the two out-years, fully expecting that we're going to spend those Title I funds for the purpose in which they're intended and that's to take care of, to take care of our students. So although we're up in 2011, 12 with prior year revenues, that goes away in 1213 and And there's a, here's a graph that really breaks down what our revenue looks like and what our revenue sources are. You can see the, the big portion there, I don't even know what color that is at this point, but 60% of our overall revenue comes through the revenue limit and that is a state-funded. Another 22% out there is the other state portion. So roughly 82% of our revenue comes through the state. The good news in terms of revenue limit is part of that is state aid and part of that comes to, to us through local property tax collection. So about 10 million of the 19 million or so that we receive in revenue limit actually comes from property taxes. The good news about that is there's no deferral on that. That comes to us on the schedule that it's intended. The other 9 million that's out there, that's what's subject to that roughly 40% deferral. Some additional budget factors that we took into account, again, driving some of our expenditure and revenue projections. Our FTEs increased by 6.66 from budget adoption and a large part of that is due to special education as well as some of those additional Title I funds that we're able to use to, to hire monitors and aides and the like to help us in the classroom. That number comes up for budget adoption, but in 2012-13 projection, we decrease our FTEs by 2.2, 2.22. And there's an additional decrease of 9.43 for the 1314 budget. We really followed the plan that was in place at budget adoption. The 1213, 1314 FTE reductions were in the budget adoption. We carried them forward into our first interim report as well. Health and welfare costs, we talked about the increase. The certificated increase that was negotiated is in budget, the 55,000. The classified increase is not yet in our budget, but will be now after the action that was taken tonight and we'll see that in our, our second interim report. Medical plan costs are, have historically, as we've tracked it over the last several years, have been about a 7% annual increase. Because of our, our health and welfare cap, that doesn't project to a fiscal impact to the district for 1213, 1314, but there is expected to be increase in the overall cost of the, of the medical plan. The dental plan, on the other hand, the 5% increase is what we projected for 1213 and 1314. That is included in our budget and is a cost that we would expect to pay for the next couple of years. Last but not least, on this page is utilities expense. We would expect to see probably a 5% to 10%, something along those lines, increase on a year-to-year basis, but because of the closing of the, the Walford site, the sale there, some things that are happening at Worthington, you'll see less of an impact and increase in utilities in the two multi-year projections. And then this is a picture of how our expenditures break out in the general fund. And the two largest pieces, 60% salaries, 27% is benefits. So together, 87% of our budget, of our expenditures go to salaries and, and benefits, which is not uncommon in California. It actually puts us in, in pretty decent place. The rule of thumb is somewhere between 85% to 88% spent on salaries and benefits. We know that there are folks out there that are in the 90 percentile there. So we've come in, in a fairly good place there. Taking it one step further in terms of our salary composition, this is again in the general fund. And this is how our overall salary expense breaks out by, by category. The largest portion of our salary is spent on certificated. Classified is next at 21%. Management, both classified and certificated comes in at 10% and 2% is allocated to confidential.
I think before we, and if I can just jump in, sometimes we're asked where, why we always seem to look at people and our staffing. And part of it is just to have a better understanding. You know, if you look back at the slide before this, trying to cut books and supplies would only help us a smidge. And so, you know, it's, for me, it's always, it's pretty powerful to realize, because it's, it's a hard thing to talk about, is that the biggest costs to our district are people. And that's why sometimes those really, really hard decisions that we've had to make over the last five, 10 years have impacted them. And it's a tough, tough place to be in, but I think this kind of visually as well as, you know, actually kind of show the board where we are with our expenditures.
Are counselors still considered part of the management salary schedule?
They're still part of that certificated management as are school psychologists, yes. So that, that percent, 10% of management included classified management and certificated management. And like you said, the management includes counselors, psychologists, as well as other administrators.
Nurses, speech therapists?
Nurses and speech therapists are part of the
Certified.
Certified bargaining unit.
Thank you. Okay, then, jumping into the numbers here a little bit, and that is extremely hard for me to read, so I'm just going to continue to look at, at what I have here. What I tried to do on this particular slide was highlight the areas that are either of the largest impact or perhaps of most interest to folks here. Right off the bat, we see the comparison between budget in 2011, 12, adopted budget to first interim, the effect of the trigger for the most part. That reduction of $766,000 is mostly attributable to the, the trigger being put in place. Skipping down into the expenditure portion, we see that we're relatively flat in terms of our expenditures. And just from a budgeting perspective, what we do with first interim is we adjust to our actual staffing. So once our staffing picture is clear, then we bring the budget back in line to, to basically encompass the, the adjusted staffing numbers. We do that with both certificated and classified. The third line there is employee benefits and we've had an increase on the health and welfare side, as we've talked about a little bit. We also saw a decrease in terms of our workers' comp rate. The two of those together offset each other to the point where we had about a $2,000 reduction in expense for, for employee benefits from adopted to first interim. The bottom portion, I think, is, is really important as well. And I, I should also point out, this is our unrestricted funds. So it's our general fund, but the unrestricted portion of it. And the reason I took the restricted portion out is, is that we tend to follow the, the program. So for instance, with Title I, whatever our revenue is, that's what we tend to spend. So we, for the most parts, tend to stay within the parameters of, of the revenues that we receive there. By pulling out just the unrestricted, it gives us a chance to see something down below with the other sources and uses in our contribution. Some of those things cancel out and you can't see them when you see the, the entire general fund together. So in terms of inter-fund transfers out, and that is transfers from the general fund into some of our other funds, we are transferring out an additional $75,000 above what we had at budget adoption. That is mostly due to increased costs for child development as well as trying to bring our ending fund balance for our cafeteria fund back up to the level that we've maintained it traditionally, which is about $300,000. So there's a one-time impact in there of about $50,000 that helps explain why we have the variance from, from adopted to first interim. Our contributions to our restricted programs, and here again, we're seeing the impact of the special education increase, $846,000 additional contributions to restricted programs, 675,000 of that being to special education, another 165,000 or so to deferred maintenance to cover some of the projects that we are currently working on.
On your expenditures, you have certificated and classified, but what about management? Why isn't that on your expenditures?
Typically, at, at this level, we don't break those out. So we have two broad categories and if you look at the, the state reporting process and the, the number system that they use, all the ones are certificated, all the twos are classified, so we follow that reporting process.
Okay, I don't know if that answers my question. All right. Keep going.
So then this is the unrestricted fund balance and as you can see from where we were at adopted budget at about $7.3 million for our ending fund balance, we drop at the, in first interim to about $5.9 million. That's a 1, $1.3 million decrease in our ending fund balance for the general fund. And that's again, on the unrestricted side. There's an item here that I haven't highlighted and it's under the reserved amounts down below. It's called committed and I want to bring that to your attention. But that is a way for the board to specifically designate funds, and I should be careful to not use designate because that's, that's old terminology, but to say, these are funds that we want to commit and the board can take action formally to say, these funds can only be spent in this particular manner or only in the way that, that we, that we allow. So that will come up a little bit later and I wanted to point it out now. There's another line that I highlighted there and that's the contingency for the voter-approved tax. We had expected about a million two from that as we put our budget together at adoption. We have nothing for that now as we come into the first interim budget. And the reason for that is that was really the, the governor's intention of putting an initiative on the ballot that would have increased taxes with some of that flowing to, to public education. That didn't occur, so we reversed what we had expected to see at budget, at budget adoption. That number goes away. So here's an ending fund balance comparison. We have 10 or 12 different funds that are used to house various functions or pay for various things. General fund is the one that we spend the most time on and that's where we do the majority of our business, where the majority of our revenue comes in and where the majority of our expenditures come out. Going quickly from where we were at budget adoption, general fund, down to 3 Going quickly from where we were at budget adoption, general fund, down to three point one at first interim, and we see a little bit of an uptick in our projection for two thousand twelve, thirteen. But by the time we get to thirteen, fourteen, that ending fund balance is just over two million dollars. The special reserve is the rainy day fund, if you will, a place where we're able to put money aside for particular contingencies, economic uncertainties. That remains relatively flat until we get to thirteen, fourteen. At that point, we needed to tap into our special reserves to pay for some of the other programs that were in place. And that's the reason that that has declined. Fund twenty-three is our secondary bond fund. Fund forty is our capital outlay fund. They both have balances projected for two thousand eleven, twelve, but in twelve, thirteen, those are both fully spent. And so there's another two point three million dollars that would have been there in two thousand eleven, twelve, that goes away by the end of two thousand twelve, thirteen. The net impact of looking at the bottom line of seven point eight million dollars at first interim, down to where we would see it in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, that's about a four point one million dollar reduction in ending fund balances. That's significant.
Do you have the anticipated construction at Lincoln School in this budget?
It is. So that's in Fund Forty, the capital outlay fund. The million nine that we have in the coffers right now is projected to be fully spent in two thousand twelve, thirteen. And there's a really good, you see these numbers coming down, and in a couple of words, it's deficit spending. For both our budget projection at adoption, for our first interim and for our two multi-years, as well as going back, we've continued to spend more than we brought in in terms of revenue. We've had, we've been able to offset that by some of our reserves and some of the monies that we were able to put away. But we're starting to run out of the ability to do that. And that's something that we will certainly need to address. This page goes along with the next page, which talks about the district reserves. And really, to get a good, good idea of how, what our fiscal health is, is a combination of looking at ending fund balances and our district reserves. But for a moment, I'll just focus on the reserves. And I'm going to go down to the bottom line on all of these where it's highlighted, and I'll move right to first interim. We had projected seven point eight six percent reserves, or we're projecting that for eleven, twelve. The state mandate is three percent, so at seven point eight percent on paper, it seems like we're doing pretty well. We actually have an uptick in twelve, thirteen, and that's just, we moved money into our, into our fund for economic uncertainty ahead of time. Probably could have held off and done that in thirteen, fourteen. So it makes it look like our reserves are building in twelve, thirteen. But if you look at the previous slide and the ending fund balances, you'll see that on the net, we actually are seeing a pretty significant decline between the two. And I'll come back to the twelve point two.
I don't understand how on one page you, it shows the ending balances almost fifty percent, and then on this page, the percentage increasing.
It's, in essence, two different pots of money, Hank. So this is a small subset of our ending fund balance, the reserves are, and the ending fund balances give a better overall picture of really the cash that we have and the different resources that we hold that money in.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Some.
Okay. I guess what I would say is, if you put these two together and did the math on those, what we're really looking at is about a four million dollar drop from eleven, twelve to thirteen, fourteen. And they really do need to be viewed together to get a complete picture of what our fiscal health is. So the last number in thirteen, fourteen is a seven point seven budgeted reserve, and that's about two point six million dollars in reserves. Two point six million in reserves would get us through roughly two to three months' worth of operation. So it sounds like it's a nice number, but if we were really up against it, that's about the amount of wiggle room that that would allow us.
We can't quite defer wages like the state defers our revenue?
Not able to do it, Hank. Not able to do it.
So David, when I suggest we defer your paycheck, I don't think it'll fly.
I hope not.
That's a good answer.
And one of the problems with looking at reserves and ending balances, they look quite robust. And in fact, if you look across the state, reserves are at historical highs right now. A large part of that is, though, because of flexibility, the ability to bring in money from programs that were formerly restricted. And some of those one-time flexes have really made it look like we're flush with cash throughout. And we were for a period of time. But as we continued to deficit spend, we saw that number come down pretty significantly and unfortunately fairly quickly. And what I really want to do now is make the one final point and hopefully draw this connection. Twelve point two five percent is what we're showing for two thousand twelve, thirteen reserve projection. And by any other metric, you would say that that's a really healthy number to have. But what it translates to, unfortunately, is not cash. Reserves and ending fund balances are not cash. Those are the apportionments that we're supposed to receive irrespective of whether the cash really comes to the door or not. This is a nice chart that shows the delay, the deferral, if you will, of the revenues that come to us through the state. The blue ones are the ongoing deferrals. And really quickly, what you can see, the two lines, the dotted lines, are the different years. So you can see the moneybags on one side that are supposed to come in in one year, really being pushed into the next year. And there's a lot of blue bags that are up there because there's a lot of deferrals that are already in place and that will continue. There are some, and I think there are green bags up there, that are new deferrals that have hit us for two thousand eleven, twelve, that push some of that cash into twelve, thirteen. The number that jumps out at me is a red number right there, nine point four four billion, or put in our parlance, thirty-nine percent of the money that we should be receiving from the state is being deferred into a future accounting period. And I like to say this as I'm talking to people, because the issue of cash is so very important to us, that can anybody here run their household budget receiving only sixty percent of their paycheck? The Ziegler's can't do it. Maybe somebody else can, but...
I think for, I think one of the things that, you know, made an impact on me is the blue we kind of known about, and we've been trying to deal with it and adjust to it. But the green, which are on the, you see, there's like four, two bags on each side that get shoved over to the other side. That's as of July one. Is that correct? Those are new deferrals, is my understanding. So we weren't able to account for them last year as we were building this year's budget because we didn't know those were going to occur.
That's correct.
And for me, some of those are not, like, they're deferring it for a month or two. One of them, you know, the money that we're supposed to get in March, we now won't get until August. Money that we were supposed to get in April, we now won't get into August. Those two alone are new, that we didn't know that we would have to try to figure out how to run our business with those. I mean, that's, that's a new impact on our, on our budget. Sorry.
That's absolutely correct. So again, I'm going to remind you of the twelve point two five reserve that we saw at the end of two thousand twelve, thirteen, because the next slide shows what our projected cash looks like over the next few years. At budget adoption, we showed a projected year-end cash balance of three point nine million. As a first interim, we're showing a projected cash balance of one point three million. And you can see part of the reason why, as you look at the line below that, which is the deferrals. The deferrals have increased, got to get to the right page here, from five point two million to six point four million. So just as Leanne was saying, when we put together the budget originally, we were aware of five point two million dollars in deferral. The new deferrals that have come into place increase that amount by one point two million. So that's where it translates into the projected cash balance decreasing by roughly two point six million dollars. And we can point to three significant items that comprise that. One point two million dollar, one point two million dollars in deferrals, nine hundred thousand dollars in terms of the trigger, and another seven hundred thousand dollars in terms of special education. I'm rounding to get through the numbers quickly. But all in all, that more than explains that decrease in our projected cash balance for eleven, twelve.
In years past, we were able to issue trans to cover timing differences of cash flow?
That's correct.
We're not allowed to do that anymore?
That's certainly a possibility for us, and...
To issue what?
Trans.
Tax revenue anticipation notes, in essence, borrowing from a future cash flow, to be able to put it in place right now. And John, before I come back around to that, I just want to take you to the two thousand twelve, thirteen projected cash balance. I said upfront, we have a cash issue, and there's the number right there. We're projecting roughly a million dollar shortfall in cash as we get to the end of two thousand twelve, thirteen. Ammilarated somewhat by the softened trigger, but even counting the three hundred fifty thousand dollars that I think we'll be bringing back into our coffers, that still would put us at roughly six hundred fifty thousand dollars as a negative cash projection for two thousand twelve, thirteen. One of the ways to solve that would potentially be borrowing through a trans. The problem with that, though, is there's no guarantee that we would be able to do a trans. It's not that you said, we want to do it, and it's automatically accepted. You have to have somebody, an investor, in essence, who wants to front that money. It's expensive, so there's an additional cost that goes along with it. And then last but not least, we might not be creditworthy, if you will, to an investor. With our history of deficit spending and the projection that we have for deficit spending, it's not certain that we would be able to qualify and put a trans in place. So that's hopefully answering that question. We did do a projected cash flow for thirteen, fourteen, and I'll just say that the number continues to be red, and it's hard to project that far out with any accuracy for cash, so we didn't include it in terms of this projection. Okay, so now on to the last slide. And with the picture that we've just painted for you, there are some recommendations that we would bring forth with the board at this point. First is, because of our cash situation, is to delay the remodel of the Lincoln School, and that would allow us to conserve cash until the economic outlook for the state improves or at least becomes clearer to us. Once that money's spent, that money is out the door. I brought up the idea of being able to commit funds earlier on in anticipation of coming to this point. I understand it's the board's will that we would like to do the Lincoln School build-out. I think in terms of our cash position, though, it's not prudent to do it at this point. Being able to keep that one point nine million in the coffers would allow us to borrow on an interfund basis, and in essence, would solve our negative cash flow picture. And I should drop, should come back to one more point. Our cash projection is based on our general fund, Fund O-one, and our special reserve fund, Fund Seventeen. Those two are the two funds that are looked at to supply cash to the district. That being said, we do have the ability to do interfund borrowing, such that we could borrow from the capital outlay fund, Forty, back to Fund O-one, and make it so that our cash outlook for two thousand twelve, thirteen remains positive. That would be one thing. Secondly, with the deficit spending that we're continuing to project and experience, we would recommend a special meeting, as Leanne talked about a bit earlier, and to be able to address some of the fiscal concerns, to be able to put together recommendations for potential changes, reductions, cost savings measures, those type of things, bring those back to the board for review, and then hopefully ultimately to prioritize and make decisions as to where it would be most appropriate to come up with those cost reductions. And then last but not least, the recommendation is for the board to approve the first interim report, excuse me, with a qualified certification. And that's the end of my slide presentation, but I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
The problem with interfund borrowing is if the borrowing isn't paid back. And if our root problem is deficit spending, my fear is that we've, if we delay the remodel of Lincoln, it'll give us a lot more pressure to delay making the decisions to reduce the deficit spending, which is the root cause of this all. And if we aren't able to pay back those borrowed funds, then there will never be funds again available to remodel Lincoln School, which could cause great problems with ever opening Lincoln School for anything in the future.
It could also, couldn't it also cause problems with, if we continue to grow our ability to house our students? If we, because that would mean that the group that's out at, Winship now would not be able to move in any place, so they would end up staying out there, so that facility wouldn't be available for anything that we decide that might be useful.
Question on the deferrals. When did deferrals start? It's kind of like, when did slavery start, and when is it expected to end?
So we've been dealing with deferrals for the past two years, and this year is, I believe, the third year for deferrals that have really impacted us. When will they end? That's an even more difficult question to answer.
The reason I ask it is, is there a potential for the state to say, well, we'll just cross that off?
I think there's potential for that.
They already have. There's been some deferrals that they deferred and deferred, and then we never got, they go back two years.
Right. And whether they ever officially cross it off, or whether they just continue to proverbially kick the can down the road and just, you know, keep on doing that year after year, is anybody's guess how that might play out. It's also possible that the economic picture turns around, things get rosy very quickly, and the state fills its coffers and pays us back. I'm not betting on that one. I'm just saying that that's a, that's a possibility, so...
Having visited the schools, and I, I mean, they're, they're packed. I don't know if we don't do something with Lincoln. I mean, there's, kids are being taught in rooms that used to be a closet, a storage room. There's, there's kids, you know, being pulled out to resource at Alice Burney with dividers, four little separate spots where kids are trying to get individual instruction with, you know, hearing the person next to them, and the person next to them, and people coming in and out. And so something's got to be done about where we're educating the kids. And I really worry about that with Lincoln, if we don't do something there and free up some rooms so we have room for, for the students.
I do want to chime in. It's only really elementary that's that impacted. Unfortunately, Zane has classrooms that are more than available, as does Zurich High. It just would mean that our district would look different. That goes back to the whole reconfiguration conversation that we're having.
But the conversation we were having about reconfiguration had to do with moving Winship to Lincoln.
That was part of it. It wasn't all of it. You know, I mean, one of the things that I talked about was, even if, and this is, again, just part of the conversation in terms of reconfiguration, was looking at whether or not we moved the programs at Winship to Zo, which would, I mean, there's options that we haven't considered because...
What do you mean to Zo?
I mean, not Zo, I mean, Zane, sorry.
Oh, Zane, okay.
Which they can do, looking at if we go charter or magnet or any of those kinds of things. And those kind of conversations obviously aren't for today for us to take action on. I also know that we've talked before that we certainly have room, and I'm not saying it's ideal, but just to lay it out there, to put portables on some of our sites, which are cheaper than remodeling.
Yeah.
Does it mean I don't want to remodel Lincoln? No. I'm just really concerned about our cash flow, and kind of holding it in the bank allows us to have that if we need it. It's kind of like the recommendation that you, that all of us should have X number of months in our safety deposit, or our savings account, so if we don't have an income, if we spend it, we don't then have that savings account. If we save it and don't allow us to access for other things, as then the board determines, it helps. it helps. We certainly can move forward with the Lincoln remodel. What I would say, or I would project, is that then the reductions we have to make will certainly look different. That would be my guess.
I tend to agree with John about the root cause, when 87% of the budget is personnel.
Correct.
We can't be using these one-time monies. We may call it a savings account, or a reserve, or whatever we want, and talk about cash flow, but we have to address the root cause of deficit spending. One of the things that I've learned, sitting on both sides of the negotiating table, is that it's very easy to demand more when there's a ending balance, when there is a percentage reserve that's showing. And part of my question earlier, the difference between those percentages and the actual numbers, isn't readily available or understood.
Yeah.
But I think we have to go forward with the remodel of Lincoln. And I tend to support what John's saying. Moving forward with that enables any reconfiguration, and it takes care of the buildings. We, as a district, have been guilty of letting buildings go by the wayside. That's, and I'm not talking about during this administration, I'm going back 25 years when we didn't maintain Jacobs. And basically, we let it self-destruct. It's very hard to maintain a place like Jefferson, much less make it ADA compliant. I understand those difficulties, but if you don't maintain a facility, if you don't do the remodels, if you don't take care of it, you lose it. And then what you get is second-rate income from it.
And I guess I would pretty much, in many ways, agree with everything you said. But the implication that I want the board to consider is then those decisions that we have to make when we get to that facility plan are going to be that much harder. Things that we heard about today that are, all of our heart of hearts want to do, it may end up being we can't do. And I'm just, you know, that's because we can't continue to deficit spend, I agree.
Another thing, the thing about it, too, is if you're looking for a fund to borrow from, that there is the possible sale of Worthington coming up, and then the looming sale of the, much of the Jacobs property. And so that would be one source to replenish the capital outlay fund to borrow from.
And I absolutely agree. When we have those money in the banks, you know, it's just what we had to bring to the board tonight, of course, is where we are right now. As those monies come in, and we can put them towards projects, because we know those monies have to go towards facilities, that would certainly help the facility conversation tremendously. However, I know that letting go of property is not an easy decision either.
Are we within budget of what we intend to spend on the new district office? The amount that we got from selling Alford? Are we within that? We're not finished yet?
We're about $50,000 over that, I believe, Fran. I tried to take a quick look at that this morning, and because I wanted to make sure that the million nine that we were talking about for the any fund balance for Lincoln was there, and we were a little bit under that, so I think by about $50,000.
Should we be talking about, should we be talking about the binder? Because I wrote questions about that.
Sure.
And I don't know when the appropriate time. We're kind of wandering off with the recommendations before we deal with the first interim report. On that, it's page three of three, or page two of three and three of three, that second tab you were speaking about, in the binder.
What page is it on?
It's a second, or second?
Second tab.
Okay, and actually, it's right in front of the second tab.
Oh, it's in front of the second tab, okay.
It's the met, not met pages that Paul's referring to earlier. I wanted, okay. On number eight, the deficit spending, the unrestricted deficit spending, if any, has not exceeded the standard in any of the current or two subsequent fiscal years. Are you indicating here that the deficit spending right now has worsened?
I want to make sure I'm on the same page with you, Hank. Is that page 12? There's...
Page two.
Page two.
Under tab one.
But it...
The handwritten number.
The handwritten two.
Yeah, okay.
Under tab one.
Hank, I think that's the summary of the not met, but if you want the detail of the not met, turn to page 12.
Oh.
So if you look at number eight that you're looking at on page two, where it talks about deficit spending, the explanation for that, or the rationale, is on page 12, in the binder, where it does say that the district is aware that it is deficit spending as indicated in the subsequent years. However, the percentage is projected to decrease as plans for reduction expenditures are implemented. Are you...
Okay, that's the bottom box?
Yeah.
Okay.
So anytime there's a not met in that two-page that you reference, you will find the explanation in the book.
That helps a lot. I was digging through it, and I didn't find the explanations.
And if I can jump in really quickly, that first two-page summary is just that, a summary. For what it's worth, I immediately skipped to, I guess that's tab, sorry, I'm not seeing it very well, tab two, and went through the detail there, and kind of pulled it apart that way. It's very interesting reading.
So for me, who's a visual person, I just look at explanation. If the box is empty, that's a good thing. If there's words in the box, we need to read, we need to read them, because that means we haven't met something.
On which page are you?
On any of the pages in chapter two.
Okay.
So if the explanation has no words in it, it means we met the criteria, or we were within any variance that's allowable. But, but for example, if you flip to page five, where there's an area we did not meet, then there's an explanation. So just if you go page by page, and I don't know if you guys want to do that now, but empty boxes are good, words in it are not good.
I guess the, okay, when we get a binder like this, I need some point of reference on how to read it.
Cliff notes.
I spent quite a bit of time digging through it, and I'm finding that really I'm quite unprepared then to ask questions, because I didn't know how to read it.
And you can hardly read it anyway.
It's tiny.
The tiny is not a hard decision. I agree.
Okay, I'm going to go back to some of the general questions that I had highlighting, which would be on page three.
Okay.
And the very top one, on long-term commitments. Does the district have long-term multi-year commitments or debt agreements? Are those the bonds?
The bonds and certificates of participation, yes.
And then down in the second box, A2, independent position control. What in the world is that?
Under additional fiscal indicators, and it says A2.
Correct.
Basically, they're saying that if your, if your systems are independent of each other, that's not a good thing, they don't talk to each other, but our payroll and our position control are linked together, so from an audit perspective, that's a stronger position to take.
And I'll go, I'm going to peopleize it.
Thank you.
For lack of a better word. For example, in the accounting department, there are people that set up payroll, but the HR department does the position control. It's a checks and balances, so that it's not all occurring in accounting, nor is it all occurring in HR. But they do talk together through EPICs, is that what it's called?
EPICs, right.
Through the EPIC system. So, you know, it's so that one person isn't doing all of it from start to finish in terms of wages, salaries, and benefits.
Does anybody else have questions?
Any other questions from the board, or the public?
My bad.
One thing to note is, we're not looking to make any decisions tonight. This is informational background for future meetings we're going to be having.
I would say it is a discussion action. If the board would like to pull apart the discussion action, it could be that the board could modify the request, what we're asking from the board to make, take action on the first interim being self-certified as qualified, and take off any action right now with regards to Lincoln, because that's going to be discussed, you know, Saturday. I mean, I think at least Paul, you would like to have...
Yeah, we're at the point where we do need to certify, and that's just a requirement by the 15th, so.
When I said decisions, I meant, following up on your recommendations.
Got it.
I would like to remove the recommendations for now, and just approve the acceptance of the report.
So for clarification, you are...
And whether, and decide whether we self-qualify.
Okay. So the motion would be that the governing board approves the 2011-2012 first interim report with a qualified certification? That would be the motion?
Is that your motion?
Well, I'm asking.
Well, I'm not making the motion, I can't make the motion, but that would be my preference.
That would be the motion. I was asking a question.
Okay, we're, we're getting this on December 14th, with a requirement that it's certified one way or another by December 15th, when, quite frankly, I don't understand all of what I'm reading.
It's a requirement for us to certify.
I don't do well with requirements when I don't understand what I'm certifying.
Well, and we can certainly have further conversations for future board meetings. You can vote no.
I could.
Yeah?
So Fran, do you want to...
Well, what, because I agree, I don't feel really comfortable with, you know, understanding all of this. I got it two days ago, and I read it, but it's pretty complicated and understanding it all. And I'm, what is it, what does it mean if we vote and we certify it tonight? I mean, and I read through it, and I talk to you, and we find something's wrong. I mean, what is, what is the recourse? What does it mean if we do this?
What does a qualified first interim mean in the short term and the long term? If we don't do it qualified, if we do do it qualified?
We're required to certify either positive, negative, or qualified. We have to come up with one of those three certifications. And the definition of qualified means that the district may not be able to meet its financial obligations either in the current or the two subsequent years. Negative would say that we can't, and I certainly don't believe we're at that point. Positive, of course, means just that, that everything looks good, and we're able to certify, that we're able to meet all those obligations over that three-year period.
It sounds like the new board members are not understanding the information and what the meaning of the information is.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, Wendy.
It sounds like the new board members are not understanding the information and what it means to certify, not just the wording of it, but who this goes to, what it means when you say, "Okay, we certify this, or this, or this."
So maybe you can explain the difference between a positive certification and a qualified means for the district.
But it goes to the county office of ed, and they have to approve or not approve our budget.
Right.
That's what we certify it for.
I understand.
And if we were to approve qualified certification, and we ended up being positive, it wouldn't be a problem, would it?
It wouldn't be, Fran, but we've already had the conversations with the county office. For what it's worth, we, as we looked at our, at the information that was, that came through the first interim reports, it became pretty clear to us that we have the negative cash issue in 2012-13. Talked to the county about it, went through the various issues and options. They agree, at least in conversation, that qualified is an appropriate certification for us at this point.
Well, it's, to me, it seems appropriate, is what I'm trying to say. And if we end up negative, or, you know, or positive, right now, we're saying we're not basically sure. Isn't that what we're saying? We're not basically sure we can meet...
That's correct, and I'd put it a little bit differently. I guess I would say that based on the information that we're seeing right now, we're not able to make it into 12-13 safely. However, we do have the opportunity to make changes, and come second interim report, presumably those changes would be in place, that we were able to move to a positive certification, if in fact we're able to do that. We may find other obstacles that causes to not move out of the qualified certification. We may find that situation has deteriorated to the point where we really move into the negative category.
And this, this isn't our budget, this is just the report on where we're at, based on what we adopted as our budget.
Right.
So it...
And the certification of qualified, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it doesn't change anything. It doesn't, at this point, mean that we go through additional reporting cycles, that there's additional county oversight, or anything along those lines. If we move into negative territory, then we start coming under additional oversight and the like. But the qualified really says, the future's unclear, here's what it looks like to us right now. It gives us the opportunity to make the changes that are necessary to push us forward and push us in a positive direction.
I would like to move that we approve the 2011-12 first interim report with a qualified certification. I either get a second, or I don't.
But are you removing the recommendations for now?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not saying any of the recommendations. All I'm saying is C, period.
To accept the first interim report and qualify as...
To approve.
And certify as qualified.
I'm not saying...
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and discussion, and we can have, I mean, motion and a second, we can have some further discussion.
Sure, that's what you do. I don't, number one, I don't want to delay the remodel of Lincoln School. And number two, I think maybe we need to have special meetings to address the fiscal concerns, maybe more than one. But we do have a time constraint in order to do C, and so I'm only moving C. I'm not moving anything else.
Call for the question.
There's a motion and a second, call for the question, to approve the first interim report with a self-certification for qualified, and not addressing items, recommendations A, or actually B right now. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, say no. All those opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Who said no?
I said aye.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Five to zero then.
We didn't hear you.
Okay, that was item three point, N31, and now N32.
I know, I'm getting to it, I'm getting to it.
That's your expression.
N32.
Anything that doesn't belong to me.
Oh, that's Paul still.
Can I ask a question about the timing of these documents? Is there, I mean, that has always been standard procedure, especially at the interim board meeting.
I can't hear you. Is your mic on?
Yes, but I'm talking over there instead of over here. Is that better?
Yeah.
The timing of it seems to be what we've always experienced, but is there that an issue and we need to change the timing of receiving these to the next board meeting?
That would be good.
I would like to either.
No, no. We can't, unfortunately, because again, we, the December 15th date is what we have to have certified by. But actually, receiving, getting the report.
To get these in our possession at least a week before the meeting.
We will do everything that we can to make that happen.
Sometimes it's not. And, and, I don't know. What I can say, I attended at least one of the meetings that Paul had with County Office of Ed, and their review of our documents also took longer than what we had anticipated. We had hoped, I think, to get them back Friday, or I can't remember, but anyway. So I, I'm, I would hope that the next cycle might go a little quicker, because we had some pretty significant issues to adjust and address in this budget. I'm hoping we don't have those kind of issues to address and adjust from now to the March 15th requirement. I really hope.
And just as a side note, the first time I got one of these, I called, at the time it was Rick, and I called him and I said, I need to talk to you, and I sat down for two hours while he explained how to read one of these.
Yep.
I mean, it was like the day after I got it, he sat down with me and.
Which sometimes takes more than one reading.
Okay, item N32, budget development calendar for 2012-13.
I don't know that there's a whole lot to say about it, it's just our budget adoption calendar.
So this is something that, that we had worked on with Judy to try to bring back into play, a more formal process, not for, not the one I held up that is the state mandated dates, but really to give us a bit of a schedule and some mileposts along the way so that we are continually thinking about where we are in our budget cycle and doing the things that are appropriate to put together the adoptions and the interims and the like.
What's the date of our January board meeting? I've heard three different dates tonight. The date of our January board meeting?
I thought it was 17.
I've heard, okay, so it is the 18th. I've heard 14, 17, and 18, so.
I'm looking.
The calendar, we just adopted since the 18th.
Then associate 18, that's what it is.
Great.
Donna Wednesday.
Well, we've had these, we've had these before.
Yes.
Sometimes we meet that day and that day, and sometimes we don't, and we sometimes have to add in another time or, you know, move the time. It's just, it's just kind of a calendar for us to.
Help us to move forward.
And for you to kind of know what's coming up.
Right. It's a roadmap.
It's not set in stone, so I, I would move to approve it.
Yay.
Ben, a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
There's a.
That was me, I'm sorry.
There's a first and a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on item N32, budget development calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have already covered O33, so O34.
O34 really is a continuation of a conversation I think we started at the previous board meeting, and it really was a request for us to look at a board policy that hasn't been updated for a while. And in particular, the board policy has to do with expenditures and purchases and the process in which we need to move forward in order to make sure that we keep the board informed. So if you look on page 79, so this is obviously the CSBA sample, which is what we usually use as our reference for board policies, or our framework for board policies. This is a newer one. It's pretty similar to the one we had previously, but it has a little bit more depth and breadth to it. What, my understanding from the conversation we had at the last board meeting is the board really wanted to have a conversation about describing the limits of the delegation in terms of time, money, and resources to provide additional direction for staff in knowing when to come to the board and when not to come to the board with regarding to purchases beyond a specific amount. So on page 80, we, the underlying words are words we've added, so the other paragraph is the words that would have been in the board policy anyway. And it's to operationalize when, when district staff would need to come to the board for approval. And I've talked with Paul about it in terms of it provides a checks and balance, and I think that's what we thought we heard was needed. And so this is our proposal to the board is whether or not this would be meeting the board's needs as well, this type of checks and balances, where it says public contract code, just so rough, is it was sort of benchmarked at about, I think, 50,000 many years ago, and it goes up every year, so it's not quantified in that amount, because it's a formula-driven amount. It's about $75,000 now approximately. So what we're, previous board policy says that anything up to, up to 75,000 approximately does not need a checks and balance or does not need to come to the board prior to approving the purchase. What we are suggesting now is that any expenditures valued between the 25,000 and the code would be approved with a checks and balance of the CBO and the superintendent, rather than one person or the other being able to do it without the other person looking at it. And then we talked about bringing that, bringing to the board more accountability in terms of what expenditures have occurred within that 60-day timeline.
On the top of page 80, first paragraph that under, before the underlying section, it says the board shall review all transactions entered into.
Every 60 days, yeah.
But it's entered into, that's past tense. I think part of our intention was to avoid situations that we saw with a, the past CEO entering into a transaction of $150,000 for furniture, basically is what stimulated all of this.
Right.
And that, this lets us review what the individual did again, but it doesn't prevent it.
No, I, well, go to 79. Flip to the first page, because what the proposed policy would say, if we hadn't added those lines, is basically anything between 0 and 75 doesn't require any oversight other than the superintendent or designee. It's a one-person approval process. The process, so I, hypothetically, I could approve a purchase up to that amount without talking to Paul ever, or vice versa. I'd still need to bring it to the board every 60 days. That's been our policy. The distinction is, is anything over that amount should come to the board prior to approval. So there's sort of like anything under, let's do a checks and balance, bring the accounting to the board for accountability, but to stick with what the policy was intended, anything over 75,000 should be what they call a competitive bid process and should have prior board approval. So that's, it's still giving, I think, some, some, the leeway or latitude or whatever you want for us to go ahead and do the operations we need to do, but the line is clear that if it's over this amount, it has to come prior. If it's within this amount, we're suggesting a checks and balance and then bringing that accounting to the board.
I don't want to micromanage the district.
Micromanage.
And that becomes my concern, that when we get surprises like the one we received, it's dealing with those surprises.
Right.
But you said that the policy right now is anything over 75,000.
Correct.
But that was 150 and it didn't come to the board.
It was board-approved in the whole passage of remodeling.
Yes.
That's the problem. The number had been approved in a million plus, and how that was divvied up was left up to the people doing the, you know. And it, it wasn't, and you have to understand it, I mean, and I, I don't want to play devil's advocate, yes, I do want to play devil's advocate, you hear a little bit, but it wasn't actually furniture, it was workstations, because it was part of construction, not a desk or a table or a chair. It was constructing the cubicles that became, and the term, am I correct? The term has been being used as furniture, and people are getting the impression that, you know, they went out and spent a bunch of money on new fancy chairs and tables and stuff like that. This was to, to effectively cordon off the different areas that were once an entire classroom that had to become workstations. So they were the built-in counters, dividers, and when I went and looked at them, I went, this is a furniture. It isn't qualified as furniture, it qualifies as construction, but it's never really been brought up. So it was, it was part of the remodeling costs that were actually part of the building costs, not, you know, going out and buying tables and chairs.
So it wasn't something in addition to what was approved? So it didn't need to come back and be approved again?
No, that would not be my opinion, is that not?
That was our opinion, though, I think an accounting should have been brought back to the board and was all.
Yes. And, and we still, we're going to get the accounting, how much we said.
Right. And since that time, I think we have brought back where we were at that point. I can't remember when we brought you guys that one accounting, maybe in September, October-ish? Yep. Might have been October-ish, and we did try to say, these are the expenses that have been, that have gone into that building.
Okay, so can we bring this back on the consent agenda? Can we bring this back on the consent agenda? Anybody else?
So I'm hearing to bring it back on consent?
Okay, so, O35, board policy, 3312 contracts.
And that, it kind of goes hand and foot, I guess, is that we just want to make sure that we have updated our board policies, because when we did look at the issue we were discussing previously, our board policy wasn't as robust. It didn't have as much language in it that we wanted to. So part of our ongoing updating board policies, we felt that it was appropriate to bring this one as well. So, and, and part of it, if I had to look at the two, the current policy and the proposed policy, I think the intent of the language is fairly comparable. It's just as, it's much more thoroughly explained and delineated, and I would hope that that would help prevent any confusion.
Any, any questions, comments? Can we bring it back on consent? Okay. So that is the end of our agenda, there's no need for an additional closed session.
Correct.
So I, our next meeting will be at the new boardroom, which will be a lot warmer, a lot better acoustics.
It's very quiet.
And that will be on January 18th. We are adjourned.
Hi, Scott.
Except for pronouncing names.
Oh, it is cold in here. That's crazy. Put my coat on, take a shower. Oh, God.
Eats.
And here's a whole bunch of young designers clerk.
Make sure you draw all the tags.
Oh, wow.
This is okay?
Yeah, we do.
Your job, did you?
My fingers are frozen, you can't sign anything.